The April 25th, 2016 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Cape Elizabeth. Thank you all for showing up. It was great. We have a fairly busy agenda tonight, which I'll run through briefly. First item is approving minutes of the previous meeting. There is a consent agenda item in By the Sea 500 Building Replacement Site Plan, requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approval previously granted. And two items of old business, Cape Chiropractic and Acupuncture, three-lot minor subdivision, and two mixed-use building site plan. Following that will be the Verizon Wireless Water Tank Antennas Site Plan. Excuse me. Item of new business, the 535 Shore Road Site Plan, seeking site plan review for a space at 535 Shore Road. And finally, there will be an opportunity for public comment on anything which has not been subject to public comment before. We'll proceed first to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. The board has received copies. Are there any corrections, additions, what have you? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Joe, thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Henry, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move next to the consent agenda. The In By the Sea 500 Building, excuse me. In By the Sea is requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approved on June 16, 2015, for replacement of the 500 Building located at 40 Bowery Beach Road. The Planning Board is authorized under Section 19-9-4B4 of the zoning ordinance to grant one year, one, one-year extension for site plan approvals. Would the in like to be heard from?
Yeah, I'll make it short and sweet. Eric Doobie from Casco Bay Engineering, representing In By the Sea. Basically, what happens is we have a short construction window, and from October to May, based on, basically, the period of when we have visitors. So, we're requesting an extension. We didn't, we're looking at doing modular construction. So, we're in line now to have that moved forward. So, we're looking forward to doing it this October.
Any questions from the board? The applicant? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Jonathan, thank you. Second?
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered, that based on the requests submitted and project previously approved, Planning Board extends the quote "500" Building Site Plan Approval granted to the In By the Sea LLC and located at 40 Bowery Beach to June 16, 2017.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first, excuse me, item of old business. Pardon me. Two Penguin Properties LLC owned by Dr. Zev and Amber Myrowitz are requesting minor subdivision review of a three-lot subdivision, site plan review of two buildings containing 6,205 square feet of medical office space, 10 multifamily residential units, and a 357-square-foot building connector located at 12 Hillway. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 16-2-3 Minor Subdivision Review, Section 19-9 Site Plan Review, and Section 19-6-4 Town Center Design Standards. The procedure will be as follows. The board will have a summary of the applicant, of the changes made to the plans since the last meeting. We will then open the meeting for a public hearing, which is scheduled for this evening on this application. At the close of the public hearing, the board will begin substantive discussion. And at the close of the discussion, the board can do one of several things. It can approve, approve conditions, deny, or table the project to the next meeting. So, proceeding on that schedule, we would like to hear first from the applicant, applicant's representatives. If you could all please give your name and either address, or if you're a representative, what your professional capacity is.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Dr. Zev Myrowitz. Five years ago, my wife and I moved to Cape Elizabeth to start a community-focused private practice that I am proud to say has grown in leaps and bounds beyond our wildest expectations. More importantly, Cape Elizabeth has become our home, and we are deeply entrenched in the community, and would like to continue our personal and professional relationship in the town of Cape Elizabeth. We purchased the 12 Hillway land parcel in the fall of 2014, and with our team at WBRC Engineers and Architects, we have created a subdivision and site plan that significantly enriches the town center while satisfying many of the stated goals of town center development. With that said, I would like to turn the microphone over to our experts. We have Rob Frank, Director of Civic and Commercial Studios, John Kenny, Civil Engineer, Will Pogar, Principal Architect, and Portland Regional Manager and Architect, Jocelyn Booth. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Frank. I'm a professional engineer with WBRC Architects Engineers, Portland and Bangor. We are going to just basically recap the information provided to you last time, identifying any changes. I will go through some real quick intro items, and then I'll turn it over to John Kenny and Jocelyn, who will fill in a little bit more of the details. And then, we did come prepared with the site plans that we were provided with. In fact, as we had done last time, here's a hard copy of this.
Thank you.
Of the drive, so you can share that around. So, for folks that may not have been here last time, project site, the project is literally the center of Cape Elizabeth, not only in the Town Center District, but as you can see from the perimeter of the town, in the geographic center of town. This is zooming into the project site at 12 Hillway. This is Hillway over here, Ocean House Road. Project continues to be a three-lot land subdivision as presented at the last meeting, comprising of 1.3 acre, .43, and a .29 acre parcel. There is no change to the building footprint from the last presentation. All buildings are below the 5,000-square-foot threshold. The use of the building is mixed-use, as is consistent with the purpose of the district, which is to encourage an identifiable town center that includes a village feeling, mixed retail and residential uses, and inviting, or environmental, environment inviting to pedestrians. The building footprint number one, below 5,000 square feet, will comprise six residential units, one of which is the owner's unit on the upper levels, and a lower level, which is a medical clinic, also in approved use, also operated by the applicant and the owners. There's a small connector between the two footprints, and then building footprint two, also under 5,000 square feet, will house four units on the upper level, as well as medical clinic space below. That is not a change from the last meeting. I'll probably invite John up to talk about this maybe in more detail as we get into the grading. The most notable change, I think after the site walk with you folks, and after meeting with the tree warden, we did slide the sidewalk that was previously located up in this location further down to avoid some ledge outcrop and work its way into the site in a more meaningful fashion. We also, actually, I'll leave it here. We also provided a curb along Hillway as part of the improvements that are occurring in Hillway. From a grading standpoint, John will get into more detail later. I suspect, as you talk about stormwater, we have reworked this area to include the rain garden that we talked about with the review with the town engineer. And we've also redone the grading over here to accommodate the relocated sidewalk. As stated previously, all the areas in blue are porous pavement. And again, the change on this plan, the notable change is the rain garden down here. From a utility standpoint, we've identified the utility serving the farmhouse. There really is no change other than that on this plan. Orange representing sewer, blue representing water, and the purple representing power. Previously, we presented you this rendered site plan that showed plantings out here after meeting on-site, after looking at the existing vegetation in this location. We're actually, we've altered that to really take into account the existing vegetation here. We've altered the plantings here, as discussed with the folks in planning and with the tree warden. And we've also modified this area. And in fact, as late as today, talking about this is more of a front yard slash a yard ornamental presentation versus a screen. So, what currently is shown, we have some evergreens on this corner of the building to minimize the scale and the bulk here. We also have some additional plantings over in here that would sort of infill that area that is flanked by either side by existing vegetation. These were prepared earlier today. Again, we were anticipating coming back before you with a final planting plan after there's been some discussion. These are simply two options that show something that organizes around some apple trees or more fruit tree plantings and some ornamentals that would make this more of a feature, and also minimizing some of the screen, if you will, the planting here, making it more of a specimen planting. And these are really just two options that look at how that might change. So, we will seek some guidance from you as you go through that portion of the review. This map, which was presented previously, is really intended to show the bulk and the scale and the size of the building footprint, and how within other structures located within the town center that it is neither the smallest nor the largest structure in the district. I would invite, John, anything we missed on the, I guess, the layout plan? We identified, I'll go back, actually, I'll stop right here. We did identify there's a, one parking space here for the farmhouse, plus they'll share three over here. That provides one excess parking space on the entire development that's in addition or more than required. Again, trying to meet the standard of minimizing excess pavement. We've kept it to the ordinance requirement and have used the one consolidated parking, all using the porous pavement. So, I guess I would invite Jocelyn Booth, who's an architect with the firm, to describe the building and how that works with the town center standards.
Thanks.
Hi there. So, my name is Jocelyn Booth. I'm an architect with WBRC Architects and Engineers. So, we've designed these two buildings to each represent a traditional coastal home. In order to better show the design to you on these elevations that we're looking at, we've actually hidden all the trees and vegetation that would normally be in front of them that you saw on the planting diagrams earlier. We've worked closely with the design requirements to design a building which we believe will fit in with the surroundings and complies with all of the requirements given in the Town Center District. So, the design requirements clearly list guidelines for items such as minimum roof pitch, maximum building height, exterior materials, just to list a few. As you'll be able to see from this presentation, as well as the full packet of submitted materials, the design criteria have all been met. One item to note is that due to the grading on this site, the building has been designed with two-thirds of the project as a two-story building, and only one-third of the building is actually designed as a three-story building, and uses scale-reducing elements, which we'll talk about on the next couple of slides, to bring that down and modulate the building So, this is a view showing the approach on the site from Hillway from the town center. Again, the trees have been ghosted in to better show the building. The materials that we're using use the typical language of coastal New England vernacular. We have our traditional, New England shingle siding with five-inch exposure and woven corners. The colors are in the neutral range in the gray to green family. We have a white trim and detailing. One of the changes since the last meeting is we've removed the stone base that was a wainscoting as part of a cost-reduction effort. Other architectural features that we have are an architectural-grade roof. We have double-hung windows with mullions, very traditional, and craftsman-style columns Shown here is a view from Ocean House Road. In order to fit in with the neighborhood, we've used a number of scale-reducing techniques, such as gables and dormers, woven corner boards, accent trim, and articulation of building facades. We also have traditions, traditional scale-reducing techniques of porches and decks, as well as the landscaping techniques talked about earlier with the plantings. Additionally, on Hillway, there is a berming that takes place on Hillway, creating an amphitheater down below, so that the elevation is raised up along Hillway to again screen part of that three-story portion of the building. Actually, sorry, I'll go back for one second. Also shown here is the walkway that we were talking about previously. This is a garden pathway, and the intent is to provide access from Ocean House Road to the site. The idea is to have a decorative feature, such as a fence and landscaping, and some of the sketches that Rob showed a minute ago, talking about the different options with that which are being worked through. This perspective is a view of the entry on Hillway as you approach the town center. Again, the trees have been ghosted in to show the, show the building better. There'll be an entry sign to the medical space, as well as the planting and fencing in the background to screen the parking. Again, you can see here are the architectural details of the porches, the double-hung windows with mullions, and the gables to bring down the scale.
Excuse me. Do you have the amphitheater that you were just talking about, is that?
It's hard to see from this view. It's basically, if you look at the grading plans, you can see that there's a portion of land right here that's raised up higher, and there's actually a staircase going down that portion of land into the lower portion at the foot of the building.
You can show that in the grading. Do you have John's stuff?
So, this final rendering, which is coming in pretty darkly on that screen, I apologize, is the view without the trees ghosted in. So, this is the view from Rand Road across the street with the trees that are intended in that space. So, as we hope you can see from this presentation, we've worked hard to design a building which is respectful to the town center and will fit into both its surrounding neighborhood and meet all the requirements.
Pardon me, where is that scene?
This is from Rand Road. It's on Hillway. Rand Road is a road that comes in perpendicular to Hillway, pretty close to the new entry into the medical space. And actually, I can go back to a site plan. I believe we should have one on there. That's probably good right there. So, it's standing from that road right there.
Is there a question?
Yes.
The exterior material, wood or combs? What will it be?
We're looking at both, and it's going to be based on price. We'd like to be approved for both options. And I have a sample here we can look at if need be. John?
I have a couple more questions. What's the material for that?
The deck? I think we're looking at a composite material for the deck, for durability.
And the railing?
Hmm?
The railing?
The railing, at the moment, it's a design detail we're going to get to more, but at the moment, it's a wood capped rail with cables.
And the architectural columns under that, are those the round tapered?
They're square tapered craftsman-style columns.
Any other questions for the architect? Okay, continue.
Good evening. I'm John Kenny, Civil Engineer for the project. I just had a couple of quick comments. We just, we have a review letter from the town engineer. We agree with all the minor comments that they provided, and we'll be addressing all of those in the final set of drawings for the next, for the next meeting. One drawing I did provide is showing a fire truck traversing the site, and I sent that last week, I believe. I believe you've received copies of that. So, with that said, any quick questions on the engineering, or we'll get into that later, I assume?
We'll come back if we need.
All right, thank you.
Really, the end of our brief, formal presentation. Again, we've brought the full set of supplemental documents, it's PDF, to put on the wall to go through any questions you may have as you go through the substantive review. And again, unless there are any other questions, we'll yield to the other proponents and the opponents.
If there are no more questions for the applicant's staff, I think we'll go next to the public hearing and perhaps call on you folks afterwards to, as part of our discussion of the substance. Okay, the next part of the meeting is a public hearing. I'd like to just go over with you a couple of ground rules to make this thing go smoothly. We do have a three-minute limit per speaker, and we do ask you to observe it. If you can make your points even quicker than that, that would be fine, too. We'll have a timer running, and if I give you a signal like this, this means your three minutes are up, and you don't have to stop in mid-sentence. But I would ask you to leave the point you're making and call it a day. Also, if you make this move more quickly, what I'd like to do is have a little bit of a line, a little bit of a queue, say, four or five people who are next to speak, and a person at the podium. That way, if one person finishes, the next person can step right up, and we'll hear from all of you much more quickly than we otherwise would. This can be an extended part of this, part of the hearing, and so we're trying to make it go as smoothly as possible so we can move on to the other parts of this application. And we have a very busy agenda tonight, so I would ask for your cooperation. When you come to the podium, please give your name and your address clearly, so our recording secretary can get that down for the record. And we'll start the clock, and we look forward to your comments. And I'd also like to thank all the people who have sent in letters. This is a very effective way to get your ideas before the board, because we can read them once, twice, several times, whatever it takes to absorb your message. So, if I could have the first six people who would like to be heard come forward, one to the podium, and five in a line behind them, that would be terrific. There's no order prescribed. Just sort of keep a five-person line up there if you don't mind. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Teresa Collins. My husband Chris and I live at 19 Philip Road, and I can say we are bewildered, truly, and shocked by the scope of this project. Philip Road, Rand Road, we have a very quiet neighborhood. We have children that come and walk from school, play in our streets. We're very concerned about the amount of traffic that is now going to come through our streets to get as a shortcut to Hillway to get to the entrance there. We have, like I mentioned, a quiet neighborhood, and this is going to definitely change our way of life, and that does not seem fair. We have lived there for many, many years. Our neighbors on Hill Road, Rand Way, and Philip Road that live closest to this project are no longer going to be looking at woods. They're going to be looking at traffic coming and going to this quote-unquote "successful" business. And we did not know that the village, the town square, extended to this point, and that it would have buildings this big, and parking lots that would so change our way of life. I'd like that considered when you're voting to approve or not approve this project, because we are there, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Katie Fairbanks Cliffe. I live at 82 Ocean House Road. I know tonight there's going to be a lot of talk about the building and the trees and the entrance, but what I'd like to share with you tonight is the character of Dr. Zev and Amber Myrowitz. I'm the Office Manager at Cape Chiropractic and Acupuncture. I have been there almost four years, and I came on right after they opened. Dr. Zev and Amber chose Cape Elizabeth to start a business and down the road to start a family. From the very beginning, they threw themselves into not only being a part of this community, but to give back by volunteering and supporting this town. As an office in the last four years, we have sponsored the football team, basketball, baseball, lacrosse, sailing, and field hockey teams. Prodigy Graduation, Thanksgiving Food Basket Drive, Tri-For Preservation, Wet Paint Auction, Fort Williams Garden Party, Cycle for a Cure, Cape Elizabeth Turkey Trot, and we are a naming sponsor for the Cape Five Challenge, where, as you all know, all the money raised for that goes equally divided to all three of our schools. In our We Love Teachers campaign, we make and deliver treats to each and every teacher, town hall worker, police, fire department, and community service. We have done this every year since we opened our doors. We were a lead sponsor in Fashion Forecast that raised over $14,000 for Preble Street in honoring a lifelong Cape Elizabeth resident who passed away from cancer two years ago. We are working on Cape Elizabeth Tri-For Kids, the first to be held in our town, about our town, and for our town. Both Dr. Zev and Amber have volunteered countless hours to train and treat our local athletes and students. They made this town their home by being a part of it, by giving back, by going the extra mile, by always staying late and working hard. They are caring and compassionate caregivers, and we in this town are lucky to have a young couple like this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Pat Salvi-Bothell. I live at 80, 90 Ocean House Road. I own quite a few of those. 90 Ocean House Road, I'm the Business Manager for Bothells Mechanical Repair. We also own Fox Run Farm. And it is in that context, I just want to remind some of you at the hoops that my family had to jump through to grow blueberries in this town, because one a butter, and I know here there's other butters, one a butter had bad feelings about having blueberries in their backyard. There is a process that we allow, that you can completely control, and a butter's property. And that process is to buy the property. If you do not own it, yes, you should have some say, but it should not be, it should not be to the point that people can't do what they want to do with their own property. I think the Myrowitz pay an awful lot of money for a farmhouse on some land, and when I spent the hour that I spent looking at the plans at the town hall, I was amazed at the care that they put into this. The number of trees that they're leaving on that property, property that I'm now hearing people want to protect when it is overgrown with bramble, it is a depository for trash from Cumberland Farms. I mean, I walked through there about a week ago, and could have probably picked up an entire garbage bag full of trash, mostly just recently spread there from Cumberland Farms. So, I think that this can be a big improvement. I know that change is scary. But I think that when somebody puts as much time and thought into something and trying to make it fit, and to conform to all of the criteria that the town center has, that some weight has to be given to that. I sent you all a letter today that also just kind of over, went over my, some of my concerns. I'm really struck with the fact that they're saving that farmhouse. They could have just leveled that and made a bigger property. That farmhouse has been there for a really long time, and it's going to make the approach down Scott Dyer look the same. I mean, it's going to be there. I'm happy with how many trees they're leaving and how many trees they're adding, and that the two structures that they're proposing are completely fitting, they're in the same scale as the existing farmhouse. The existing farmhouse is 3,340 square feet, so what they're proposing is very, very similar. And I also think that a medical facility is going to create far less traffic than if they put in a restaurant or store, which would also be okay in the town center design. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Steven Bothell, owner of Bothells.
Stephen Bothell, owner of Bothells Mechanical and live at 90 Ocean House Road. I feel that the project that Zev and Amber will be a positive addition to the town. It will provide additional rental property, which is needed, and an improved office for Cape Chiropractic. I took time to go to the town office and carefully examine the plans and plantings and entrances and exits for this project, and Hillway is the safest site to enter and exit. The buildings do not look commercial or boxy, but have a very residential pitched roofs and look. Trees and shrub plantings will actually make the area look much better than they do now, as the area is full of brush and trees that have fallen down. The project shows extensive plantings that will improve the look of that area of town. As it has been said, Zev and Amber will be living in one of the units, so they will be more in control of the renters of the other units. Knowing this, knowing about his business and having renters myself, the traffic will not really be a big issue. Most of the time, people that live in rental units come and go maybe two or three times a day during the weekdays, going to work and coming home, so the renters will not have a very big impact. As far as their business, I can't picture that being that many extra cars running up and down Hillway. One of the concerns someone had was lighting. My feeling is that, knowing Zev and Amber, they'll be good neighbors to the people in the Hillway area and be willing to work with them as far as lighting and any other concerns they might have. I've seen a lot of change in my years here. When my parents built their house in 1950, the population in this town was around 3,800 people. When my great-grandparents moved here, they were around 1,500 people. It's almost 10,000 now. I mean, there is going to be change. It can't be avoided. We have nursing homes that we didn't have when I first started, when I first grew up here. We have dental offices, supermarkets, drugstores, and those all make this town more desirable to the people that come to live here. Also, in the '70s, we've lost three fuel stations and automotive repair shops in the central town period. So, I mean, there is going to be change. In the '70s, there were zero condominiums. Now, there's probably close to 10. I don't see this as a negative impact to this town. It looks, from the pictures and everything that they've got, it's very carefully thought out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Bates. I'm a Cape native, and for the last 18 years, I've lived at 4 Rand Road. I have seen a lot of changes over the years in the town, some good, some not. My comments here tonight, unfortunately, are in the "not" category as specifically relates to the proposed development at 12th Hillway. Here are some things that are wrong with the proposal. No development, let me repeat, no development, however otherwise conforming and legal, should be allowed to overwhelm a longstanding, budding residential neighborhood, which, incidentally, preexisted the hill property being in the town center zone. So again, this small neighborhood preexisted Hillway being eligible for this development. This isn't an issue of resistance to change, but rather resistance to inappropriateness of dropping a monolithic building or two in too small an area with inability to totally buffer its negative effects from peaceful homeowners. Development approval should proceed only when applicant interests are in balance with neighboring and greater town interests, which currently they are not. The entire orientation of the project, oversized in height and sprawl, multi-use purpose, and traffic implications of this development are out of sync with well-documented town sentiment. A smaller-scale footprint in height should face Route 77 with entrance and egress there. It should be coordinated with the development of the former Cumberland Farms property, whose new owner, I understand, is evidently amenable to discussing options. The Hillway development proposal should be tabled until a new comprehensive plan is in place, or at the very minimum, until a new townwide survey on town center preferences is conducted. I had a question for the engineers. I had a concern when I hear rain garden, and I think of mosquitoes. My other comment?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Debbie Andrews, and I also live at 4 Rand Road. That was my husband who was just speaking. And we don't always agree, but on this matter, we do. First off, I just want to appreciate the testimony on the character of Amber and Zev. That's really lovely, but I can give testimony from my neighbors. We're wonderful people, probably most people in the town are, and my own family have devoted hours to nonprofit organizations and given many dollars as well. Moving on. Ideally, the property should remain wooded or a park, complementing the rhododendrons and the "Welcome to Cape Elizabeth" sign, setting the stage for entering a semi-rural community. Two, the building footprint and number of stories is too massive and overwhelming to a residential neighborhood, at least this residential neighborhood. I haven't done the math, but the pictures look like it's two to three size, two to three times the size of the houses in the immediate area. It's just overwhelming. Suggestion: Orient the narrow sides of the building to the street to reduce the visual impact on the neighborhood. For example, the library is a relatively large building, but looks smaller in scale because the smaller width of the building faces the street. And finally, the road access should be on Route 77, not Hillway, which is already a speedway and can be difficult to leave Rand Road, anyway. Route 77 already has commercial enterprises with cars currently entering and exiting, and it makes sense to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Seidman, 21 Oakview Drive. Peter, quick question. 5,000-square-foot footprint, 20,000 square feet. I believe that exceeds the maximum in terms of the footprint. While Tarbuck's Triangle is technically part of the town center zone, the parcels Zev and Amber own is the definition of our rural character. This plan replaces that with what surveys tell us 10% or less wants or needs, unaffordable apartments. And, as if that weren't enough, we all know that this is the only property in town with our primary "Welcome Home" sign. It and the land behind it are the symbol and reality of what we love, so there's the insult on top of the injury. Exactly one year ago, a Rhode Island developer was planning to construct a giant mixed-use multiplex, including $700,000 condos between Selt and here, on top of woodland and wetland. A friend and I met with him and asked him what he'd been told about potential obstacles and objections. He informed us that Maureen was only encouraging about his plan. He said she gave him zero indication of this being a very unpopular and unprofitable idea. He went on to do his own research and found that we were right. There's no market here for what he wanted to create. He ditched the plan and withdrew his bid. The Meyerowitzes told the Press Herald a month ago, "We basically designed the buildings that the town center planners wanted." I know that's quite accurate. Here is the tragic translation. It is what 90% of townspeople strongly do not want. The only reason they didn't know is the exact same reason Rhode Island developer didn't know, because what you get from the town planner when a major development project comes to town is gross encouragement along the lines of, "This is just what the town needs." If you want to be a valued and welcome part of this community, there is a simple way to do so. Don't bypass the people of the neighborhood when designing your plans. Planning without the people on board is not an act of affiliation, it's an act of aggression. I can tell you how sorry, I can't tell you how sorry I am that Amber and Zev didn't hear all of this before making a financial commitment. Let's instead work together to welcome an office plan appropriately located on already-developed ground, one that isn't obscene in scale and location. Scaling back and relocating, Zev and Amber will save hundreds of thousands in construction costs. Let's make this a good fit for all concerned, because sentiments here run deep. Names run deep, too, in this 250-year-old town, Jordan Sprague, Fowler, Dyer, and Hill among them. But their presently controversial name and what they are known for doing in this town doesn't have to be permanently tarnished. Amber and Zev, anyone who has known Cape for 10 or 30 or 50 years, like so many of us here, knows tonight isn't about rules and rights. It's about protecting Cape's heart and soul, our unique history of top priority preservation of rural character. What the devoted citizens of Cape most value is summed up in two words, land and trust. You hold both in your hands as you decide whether a neighborhood and town gateway remains as it is, small-scale and wooded for generations to come. You will decide if the long-term residents' wishes and needs are not, I'm just finishing my sentence, as you welcome to me to do.
Let's make it a very short sentence.
I certainly will. You will decide if the long-term residents' wishes and needs are not being heard, just heard here tonight, but honored by your actions from this day forward. Thank you.
Folks, we have a long way to go tonight, and I'd really like you to keep your expressions of approval or disapproval down, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Jana Frank, and my husband Dean and I live at 18 Rand Road. Our major concerns are that the size and scale of this project have not been thoroughly appreciated and reviewed by the town council and the impact this will have as we drive into our town center. The current green space with the beautiful tall trees welcomes all of us and what we love about Cape Elizabeth, a quaint village feel. Three-story, 10,000-plus square footage buildings, larger than the library and town hall buildings, with massive parking for multiple apartments, and a commercial business doesn't make sense for this part of town and our neighborhood. And this is only Phase 1 of this project. The owners want to continue development towards Scott Dyer in Phase 2, which has not even been talked about here. I agree with Suzanne McGinn that a statistically valid survey be completed to learn more about the opinions of Cape residents before embarking on a project of this scale. I would love to see this land purchased as continued green space, marking it as the entrance to our town as it serves currently. I am fearful, if this project is approved, it will negatively impact our town in many ways, including a significant increase in traffic and bottlenecking onto each end of Hillway, a major area where schoolchildren are and walk. It will also seriously impact the property owners on Hillway and our neighborhood where the current proposal is to have the entrance and exits occur onto Hillway. The traffic and lighting will significantly impact this small road, and the negative impact on property values are enormous. 10 apartments with 1 to 2 cars each, along with a chiropractic business, and the amount of parking pavement and lighting that will be necessary will certainly change the whole character of our neighborhood and town. I sincerely hope the town will put this project on hold to seriously consider what we would truly like to see for our town center, not massive building and apartments, but a small, skilled village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you save it, Henry? I don't want to get through the public.
My name is Erin Muse, and I live at 5 Hillway, directly across from the said development. I've lived on Rand Road for about 29 years of my life, and I've lived on Hillway for about three years now. I'm very glad that my neighbors have shown up to help with this situation, and I just want everyone to know that I'm right there with them, that I don't agree with this, and I feel like it's going to ruin the town that the people here love so much. The people in my generation are very against this. We just want you to know that, to some people, this is just a road, but to us, it's our home, and that this will just absolutely devastate the people and the family in my neighborhood that I've grown to love so much, and that I really wish that you would reconsider what you're doing to the citizens of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Stannis Moody-Roberts. I'm a former tenant of Zev and Amber. I lived in the 12 Hillway farmhouse from June to this past February. I think it's fantastic that we have here a development proposal from local wonderful people such as Zev and Amber and not some LLC or some development company from out of state. Zev and Amber have been really wonderful landlords. I grew up here in Cape Elizabeth, and it was so nice to have an opportunity to be able to come back to this town and to rent a place that was affordable. They've taken wonderful care of us, plowing, landscaping. For example, we had early on some issues with the hot water, and not only did they replace the hot water heater with a new unit, but they replaced it with a heat pump, electric hot water heater, that also reduced our utility costs quite a bit. I think that just goes to show how much they care about who's renting from them. Additionally, having grown up here, I do think that having a vibrant downtown is very important for Cape Elizabeth. We don't want to just be a bedroom suburban community. I think, I do think it's important to protect our rural and our farmland and our rural areas, but like what was earlier mentioned by someone before, that forest is pretty trashed out. It's not, it's not, it's not a woods. It's really something that is worth, well, not worth, but it's not something that is to be protected, I guess. It's a place that I think is really, would be a wonderful area to have, to add to the downtown. And I do think that Zev and Amber are extremely conscientious about wanting to build and develop a building that is in keeping with the town and in keeping with the neighbors. And I just want to say that I think it's excellent that we have local people here to develop and not someone from out of town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Emery. I live at 12 Juniper Lane in Brentwood neighborhood. I wrote a letter to the planning board, and it has several attachments at the end, which are Google Earth images going uphillway and other images of the town center. I came to town hall to take a look quickly at the application, and I looked at the site plan and immediately after having read the article, hadn't followed the design process, but having read the article in the Portland Press Herald, my worst fears were realized at that point, that the development, because of whatever issues, is oriented to Hillway rather than Route 77. I don't think that someone's business, their reputation in town, any of those issues should come to bear in terms of the discussion. I think people that own property, who are doing a permitted use, have standing and should be certainly given the benefit of the doubt. That said, we have a site plan review process, and it affords the planning board an opportunity to look at the unique aspects of a project, even though it complies in all ways with the town center guidelines. It doesn't necessarily meet one of the most important ones. And what's lacking in the information that I've seen in the presentation is I don't see any renderings of the houses across the street. I don't see a cross-section of Hillway, and I think that interface between this development and Hillway is unique. My sense was, if nobody put the name of a street on the site plan, I would assume that Hillway was Route 77 and vice versa. Similarly, when I look at the east elevation, that's the elevation I would expect to be facing Hillway. It's two stories, it's mitigated and it's mass, and I hope the planning board doesn't spend a lot of time talking about materials, because the issue here is massing in urban design-type contexts. It's a bigger scale than It's a bigger scale than whether or not we have, what type of boards on the deck and so forth. That said, I made several suggestions to the planning board. One, I'd like to see, to see it flipped. I'm not anti-development. I'm in this business. I make a living in this business. So, and, but, on the other hand, I think that three-story facade facing Hillway is brutal. It really is. It could be mitigated, they could use the same devices they've used on the north elevation, they could pull the eve line down, use some more dormers, break up the expansiveness of the deck. And I have some concerns as to what trees are actually going to be remaining, and I, and I say that, not that I don't think your intent is to save them, it's that through the construction process and blasting, some may be disrupted. So, I hope that there's plenty of, a close look at, at the topography and what trees will remain. It was said that we're, we're at the center of the town center. That's not really the case. We're at the northerly edge of the town center, and that makes this juxtaposition or relationship to the Hillway neighborhood much more important. This could be beside Town Hall and is more appropriate in scale to Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Folks, I ask one last question, please. Can you hold your expressions of approval? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Mark Buden, and I live at 2 Davis Point Lane, and I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Hillway project. I'd like to respectfully disagree with some of the prior comments that I've specifically addressed tonight. I think it's of the utmost importance to have people, entrepreneurs, business people, people you live next to, that have high morals, that are respectable people. Having said that, I first met Amber and Zev when they moved in across the hall from 2 Davis Point Lane, where I live now, with my family, my wife, my two young daughters. From the time I met them to this current day, they've been respectful neighbors, close family friends, and in regards why we're here tonight, extremely dedicated, successful, and ethical business professionals. Putting our personal acquaintance aside, though, I would put my word, my character, and my professional reputation on the line to say that Amber and Zev are some of the hardest-working, knowledgeable, and respectable business owners slash operators I've ever met. And to respectfully disagree with another comment that was made tonight about the traffic. Like I said, I live directly above their business currently. When I first moved there, their business was nonexistent. It was vacant beneath us. They moved in, and from the time that they started the build-out to today, where they have a very successful, growing business, I have not had one hindrance, one hassle, one threat, one problem with traffic. I let my two young daughters, seven years old and eight years old, outside in the yard to play at their freedom, ride bikes, play in the yard, whatever they want to do, and I don't have any worry that Amber and Zev are going to be disrespectful, or any of their clients, or the supposed traffic are going to injure them or put them in harm's way. I'd also like to take a step back and think about this from a business transaction. Right now, the state of Maine is, has two, two initiatives that have come up in recent, one in the Portland Press Herald, one in the Maine Center for Entrepreneurial Development publication. One is the Educational Opportunity Tax Credit. The state of Maine is offering tax credits to people that come back to work in Maine there to help repay their student loans. The reason for that is because Maine businesses in this region and in the, in the community, we are facing difficulties finding skilled workers to do great jobs. Amber and Zev have grown this business organically. They moved to Cape Elizabeth, they started it, they funded it, and they've successfully grown it to where they need more space, more room. We should commend that. In the state of Maine's current economy, we need growth. We need businesses like this that can operate like that. The second initiative that's going on at USM, the Maine Center for Graduate Professionals, they're also doing a similar thing. Please take these into consideration for the state of Maine economy and for Amber and Zev.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Friedman. I live at 31 Brentwood Road, and while not here to talk about the particulars of this development, and I know there are some concerns, I am speaking in favor of the development as someone who does support a vibrant downtown village center, town center, whatever you want to call it. We've always been a couple clicks away from having something other than a bunch of vacant lots, and I think this is a start. You can't always start where you want to start. You start with someone who wants to be the entrepreneur. Village centers are important for both young people and old people. There's a trend to want to walk to businesses, and fortunately, we've had some nice businesses start up and remain in town, and I think that needs to be supported. Unlike Scarborough, which will never have a downtown village because it's on Route One, and there's been, you know, a lot of negative about doing anything within the town, we have an opportunity to have a very rural town and yet a vibrant downtown, which I think is desirable, both for now and the future. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Todd Larley. I live at 5 Cedar Lloyd Road with my wife Heather. First, thank you to the Town Planning Board for providing us this opportunity to speak on the Meyerwitzes' behalf. It is, it is our pleasure to be here. Second, Zev and Amber have meticulously planned to expand their business off the lot in Hillway. When first moving here in 2012, both of them worked very hard to get their business off the ground in Cape Elizabeth. Through that hard, hard work, the two of them have come to the point that they would like to expand their business to better serve the needs of their patients and the community. By following the codes and regulations set by the town of Cape, they are proposing a new structure, new structure in the town center. I've read a lot, I've read a lot of articles that have been quoting plans or surveys that are out of context or stating that the Meyerwitzes are not listening to public opinion. I recently read the most recent Town Center Plan Committee findings that were unanimously passed in October of 2014, and I would like to state how this building clearly satisfies multiple criteria of the Town Center Plan. There are three stated goals. Number one, establish a primary commercial area, support the town center as the primary location for new commercial development in Cape Elizabeth, and encourage a modest amount of small-scale mixed-use development. I see this proposal as specifically satisfying that stated goal. Visual appeal is number two. Improve the appearance and identity of the town center through continued application of the town center design standards to new development and formalizing the design standards for infrastructure improvement. This proposed development is beautiful and really conveys a well-built, mixed-use building while retaining the characteristics of a coastal home. Number three is infrastructure financing. Further investigate and, if appropriate, implement alternative financing tools to fund town center infrastructure improvements in a manner that moderates fiscal impacts on other town priorities. Since the town, since the town center was established as a tax increment financing district, the tax dollars from this development will go directly back into Cape Elizabeth and infrastructure developments for the life of the building. The Meyerwitzes have clearly followed the town, town center findings to the letter. The building completely complies with all zoning restrictions and regulations. The building proposal follows proper policy and procedure and should be permitted for construction. I look forward to seeing this building spearhead the remaining development in our community. Last and most important, let's get to the crux of this development proposal. Who are Zev and Amber's people? We believe that Zev and Amber will take care of the development, the environment, and the community around them to the best of their ability, both as business partners and as husband and wife that live in the development and Cape community. They recognize the importance of Cape values as their own: community, academics, passion, and ethics. Zev and Amber have made Cape their home in many ways. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good evening. I'm here to support the project at 12 Hillway. My name is Leslie Young. I also speak to my husband Steve Young. We live at 8 Golden Ridge Lane. The property in question is in the town center zone, not a rural area. It is within the rights of the owner to build a building of this magnitude within the town plan and zoning laws. This has been zoned commercial since 1995. The public should be aware the area in question falls within the town's focus plan. The Town Center Committee reviewed the standard plan just a year and a half ago, 2014, and they re-approved the plan, and it was even approved and appointed by our very own town council. With the approval of the Town Center standard plan from the town council came seven recommendations. Number five states to maintain the current zoning, which had thumbs up across the board. I have heard rumors that the owners of 12 Hillway and the new owners of the old Cumberland Farms chose not to speak to each other to discuss options to work together. This rumor is false. Both parties did speak with each other and gave each other full support to do their own projects. I would like to remind the public that this is their right as the owners of this property. The property in question this evening is not for the rest of this town to decide how this property should or shouldn't be developed. I would like to remind people of this community, it is not our property to decide. We do not own it, the Meyerwitz do. They are free to do as they wish, as long as their plans fall within our town center plan and zoning. I assure the public that their building plan most certainly does. According to town center zoning, they were capable of building 18 units, but they chose to keep it at 10. Others have talked about this piece of property being a green space, which just makes me somewhat laugh. I would have thought that the town a year and a half ago would have created more controversy about the land behind my house that runs along the Great Pond Green Belt Trail. This land was approved by this very board for the development of three house lots. There will be many oak trees cut down for this project, and some of the beauty of the Green Belt Trail will be taken away. Not a word from the public on this, and nor my husband and I, for we do not own the land. If we wanted to keep the land as it is behind our house, then we should have purchased the land when it became for sale. The same applies to 12 Hillway. If people in this community felt this land in the town center should have remained as it is, they should have purchased it themselves. I would also like to point out that there has been talk that this building is a big, is a big project for the town center. This is a big project, but it is not the biggest building in our town center. Some people would like the board to think it is. It's bigger than the library, yes, but not bigger than the schools or the plaza that run in close proximity to this project. Let's not forget the Inbya Sea is bigger than all of these buildings but, put together, which blocks a beautiful water view. No concerns when they renovated and expanded this years ago. 12 Hillway is a large plot of land in the town center. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Brian Cliff. I live at 82 Ocean House Road. I have been a resident of Cape Elizabeth for the past 24 years, and I promise to be brief. I'm not here to really debate the merits of the project as much as I am to speak on Zev and Amber's character and my support for their project based on the dedication that they have shown to our community after having chosen to move here and establish their business. They are smart, they are compassionate, they have dedicated much time to our school system and our athletic teams volunteering and, and helping in that regard. And I believe very strongly that these are exactly the type of young people that we should be nurturing and helping to build the future of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Newell, and with my wife Christine, we live at 9 Rand Road. And probably from the letters I've seen, we're the newest neighbors in that area. However, we've been 30-year residents of the town of Cape Elizabeth. This project's going to challenge my libertarian foundation because this is their property. They get to do what they want, as long as it's within the rules. However, we've heard a lot about the good nature of these people. I have no doubt about it, and I'm going to challenge them to be good neighbors because my concerns are simply summed up in the word pollution. First, visual pollution. All of these porches that are facing Rand Road, we all know what porches collect. I know they plan to live there. I know they plan to ask their neighbors to be good, their tenants to be good neighbors, but what we can't have is the visual pollution of people storing things out on their porches because it's inconvenient to put it in their apartment. Noise pollution. Has any of you been up at 5:00 AM outside of sea salt when the trash trucks come and pick up the dumpster? Dumpster drivers don't care how much noise they make at 5:00 in the morning. I'm out there, I run with a group of people. You don't believe me any Friday morning when the dumpster truck comes by? They'll make a lot of noise, and from what I see, there's a dumpster on this property, and that needs to be addressed. Light pollution. There is a street light, a lonely street light on Hillway. We're now going to have parking lot lights, we're going to have apartment lights, there will be a lot more light pollution invading our property than we've had before. I wish that to be addressed. And lastly, 54% of this admittedly ugly lot is about to be paved over and built upon. I have a hard time considering that to be a friendly use of property. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Becky Ferneld. I live on 313 Mitchell Road and have lived in Cape Elizabeth for 24 years. I don't live in the area surrounding this project, however, I'm, I'm very concerned about the buildings that are built in our town center as part of a whole comprehensive plan. I think that the, that definitely the views and, and the, of the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood, need to be strongly considered. It's only fair to those people who reside in the neighborhood that there is definitely very specific consideration given to their needs. As you've heard some of the people say tonight, the, this was a residential area, and it was, the area was changed to the village center concept after many of them had moved there. So, I think it's important in planning this process to give very strong consideration to the neighborhood. I, I, this is nothing against the, the couple who have this business. It sounds like they make wonderful contributions to the community, and I applaud that, and I'm not against having any building there or a business there. I just think from the scale and the size of it seems out of place for that particular parcel of land. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Stoughton, and I live at 15 Murray Drive in the neighborhood that will be abutting. I just have three things that I wanted to mention, but first, just to say, this is absolutely nothing to do with feelings about Zev or Amber. I think that they're a wonderful addition to our community, and I absolutely would encourage them in their business and in the growth of their business. Two points. One would be the access coming on off of Hillway. I do feel that that is, is problematic for traffic flow. Having lived in that neighborhood for 16 years now, that road is already a very active and often fast thoroughfare. There is often not much police monitoring of speeds on that road. My children have been walking to school. I have a junior in high school now. They've been walking to school all these years. They do not walk on Hillway. They have never walked on Hillway because we don't have a good sidewalk on Hillway. We don't have a safe spot for them to really be walking to school on Hillway, and yet that is where we have our official crosswalk. They cross at the unofficial crosswalk, which is almost always guarded by someone, but I do have concerns regarding flow of traffic, regarding of safety of children. Our neighborhood will always have children in it. It comes in at a price point where people can afford to get into Cape Elizabeth when they're young and they have young children. So, I do think this impacts our neighborhood in that regard with traffic as well. The only thing that I have specifically related to the project would be the scale. I do feel that the scale, looking onto that neighborhood, particularly off of Rand Road, but also off of Philip, is very large, and I would prefer to see it oriented towards 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is John Volz. I'm a resident of 33 Philip Road. I'd like to address, first of all, this is a really important site. It's positioned right behind the welcome sign to Cape Elizabeth. It's one of the most visible parcels in the entire town center. You can see it for half a mile down Ocean House Road. So, it's very important that we get this right. This development is going to set the tone for future development along Route 77. Unfortunately, I feel the design, site design approach is flawed. It says the proposed project is designed to preserve the existing underdeveloped woodlands as much as possible, yet despite its stated goal, it preserves only a small fraction of those woodlands. I estimate approximately 80% of it will be cleared or built on. But more importantly, the design is inconsistent with creating a visually appealing and vibrant town center because the commercial street, which is in the town center plan, Route 77, is designed to become the new main street, the main street of Cape Elizabeth. This has 160 feet facing Ocean House Road, and it's going to be vacant except for a walkway. This is, this is a mixed-use commercial building. You have one street that is all commercial, and you have one street that is commercial and residential, and all of the impact is funneled onto one that's part residential. It makes no sense to me. is designed to become the new main street, the main street of Cape Elizabeth. This has a hundred and sixty feet facing Ocean House Road, and it's going to be vacant except for a walkway. This is, this is a mixed-use commercial building. You have one street that is all commercial, and you have one street that is commercial and residential, and all of the impact is funneled onto one that's part residential. It makes no sense to me. You're not, you don't have the visual appeal of a town center where the buildings face the commercials sign, and there's an entrance, and you can know where you enter. It doesn't make any sense. Instead, what you've got is an overly large project that tries to hide behind what little trees remain and bury half of it underground. So when you look at the size of the building, I have, you know, everywhere you look, the size sort of may comply with the letter of the law, but undermines the spirit of the law. Every single elevation you look at it, that building appears as one building. So it has two buildings with a footprint and a connecting lot, which is allowed for connecting walkways. It's not really a connecting walkway, it's a story and a half high, and it's about seven feet wide. And if you look at it, it looks like one building for virtually every elevation. So that intent of those regulations was to limit the mass, but that's not, you know, while they're complying, it doesn't, it doesn't actually meet the intent of the regulation. So I also have some subdivision comments, though, so that I feel like the easement that is left on Lot Two makes Lot Two, for any future user, really difficult to develop. And it impairs future development for the town center of Lot Two. And similarly, the positioning of Lot One also may impair the development of Lot Two. Finally, I would like to mention some flaws in the, in the actual plan that was submitted that I found somewhat troubling. The traffic study does not appear to be valid. It was done in, from what I saw, it was done in mid-winter and then grossed up to estimate summer. The assumption that, you know, that assumption seems false.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to hear your comments. Thank you for your comments.
It's very difficult to contain your comments for a hundred and thirty-nine page report in three minutes. Thank you.
I understand. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Amber Hayes. I live at one thirty-six Two Lights Road. I've lived in Cape Elizabeth my entire life. Well, I've traveled around a lot. I have been in school with both Zev and Amber. They're lovely people. Their character is not in question here. They're great business people. I am thrilled that their business is thriving in this town. It's wonderful. We deserve that. But the character of Cape Elizabeth is because of our quiet town. We are not spillover from Portland. We are our own entity. And the importance of growing up a block away from Hill Way, walking to school every day, playing in those woods my entire life, is why I moved my son and I back here. We own a house in Falmouth. I don't want to live in Falmouth. I don't want Route One, Falmouth, to become my hometown. Cape Elizabeth is so important to what we have in this environment. I don't think we sustain one apartment building, two apartment buildings, and how many more places are for sale that are going to be developed in this way. I live out on the peninsula, so my commute to work in Portland, which I know a lot of other people living in Broad Cove, that huge neighborhood, I'm going to go Spurwink because this will inevitably lead to a traffic light in an already overcrowded intersection. Traffic should stay with traffic. There is no excuse for the entrance and exit for this building to be on Hill Way. It should stay on seventy-seven. I will redirect myself, and I'm sure other people will, to Spurwink, and I'm wondering if the traffic design has looked at that, because Spurwink is not capable of any more traffic than is already on there. I implore you, Amber and Zev, to please scale this back. I think it's great, it'll be a great addition for Cape Elizabeth. It's just too big. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, I will now close the public portion of the hearing. Thank you all very much for showing up and expressing your views. We'll now turn to the substantive discussion of the application. We can do this a number of ways. First of all, I think maybe give the board a chance to, oh, sorry.
If you're inclined, Mr. Chairman, I'd like one comment. Whilst I'm obviously listening to all of your comments, except one particular speaker, who somehow cast aspersion about the professionalism of one of the staff members on this board, and I thought it was in extremely bad taste, and I think the gentleman ought to apologize. Personal attacks are not the subject of this, but yet I have heard from that gentleman once or twice, and he always tries to go for personal attacks. I think it's wrong, and he should have held it back. And I'm also appalled that people had some desire to applaud that type of talk. Now, this is not the time, nor the place, to bring that type of thing in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Henry. Okay, moving forward, first of all, do the board members have any questions from the applicant's professional advisors? Victoria.
I do have some questions for the applicant's advisors, and they're going to be the detail, very specific detail. But I heard a couple of comments from people that are bigger picture, much bigger picture.
The other approach is sort of a top-down approach and talking, the project itself, and then the detail. The board would like to approach it in that fashion? Okay, great.
So which way, I missed it, which way we want to go?
Well, let's, let's do the top-down approach and talk about the big picture, and then we'll get into the fine detail.
I heard a number of comments in regard to having the access not on Hill Way, having access on Route seventy-seven, that this project should be flipped and so on. But I, there is a legitimate reason that it's presented the way it is, and I was wondering if our town planner could address some of the issues, and if there's any comments also that could address why having this project face Route seventy-seven, having the traffic coming in and out of this project on Route seventy-seven, as opposed to why they're doing it on Hill Way.
So, you know, given a different site with different topography, absolutely, the building should absolutely be oriented towards Hill Way. But the planning board was out there during the sidewalk. There's less than two hundred feet of frontage on Ocean House Road, there's hundreds of feet of frontage on Hill Way. The first time town staff heard about this project, the first thing I heard from a couple of town staff people was, they're not putting a driveway there, are they? So that, that section of Ocean House Road is just a really, really tough spot. It's on a hill, the site distance is poor. If you're coming out of there in the early morning winter, I think any of us who have taken that hill knows that the sun hits you at just the right point. So it's just physically a dangerous place. And I, I know there were several people who sighed a little bit of relief that they weren't trying to fit a driveway in there because of the hill, because of the steepness. I, I would like to turn it over to the applicant for a moment because they did the traffic study, and those people are professional traffic engineers who have to look at things like horizontal and vertical alignment and site distance.
Oh, we did have a traffic, a study done by Main Traffic Resources. They, they found that the proposed project did not cause any detrimental impacts on, on the flow of traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer myself, so I can't address it specifically, but they did submit the traffic study, performed the counts, and that study was reviewed by the town engineer, Steve Harding at Sevego Technics, and his comments are provided in the record as well. His, his takeaway was that all the assumptions that Main Traffic Resources made were on the conservative, well on the conservative side, and they did the whole analysis and, and found that it really would have minimal effect on, on the traffic.
Could you elaborate a little on the problems of entering from seventy-seven?
Yes. Well, my sense is that with Hill Way, you have two controlled intersections at each end of Hill Way, Scott Dyer Road and Route seventy-seven. So when you have traffic leaving the site, you have stacking space, it's a, it's a low mileage, a low-speed spur versus going directly out onto seventy-seven where your, you know, speeds are faster and there's no stacking or, you know, so it's, from my perspective, again, not a traffic engineer, it makes sense to be able to come out onto Hill Way, go to those controlled intersections before you get out onto seventy-seven in either direction from Scott Dyer or, or, oh, to seventy-seven.
Did you, how, how many extra trips or car in and outs would be involved if, if one of these buildings is operational?
Unfortunately, I, I, I'm not prepared to speak to that. Certainly at the next, you know, we could have the traffic engineer from Main Traffic Resources at the next meeting.
When they did the traffic study, did they not?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, they did.
What impact did that have?
No effect on level of service at the intersections.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
There's no effect, no detrimental effect on the level of service at the two intersections.
I guess it's to do with the rate in which traffic reaches crossover points. Nothing to do with the act of traffic traveling, but the actual interaction between two cars coming in different directions. So of course, and that must something to do with the randomness of the events. So, for example, in a, typically the problems always start when you get to a rush hour and everybody tries to use it at one particular time, but during the day, most things are okay and flow evenly.
Right.
So, so a traffic study that would've done, would've done there would have to involve either a rush hour or a, or a time, a time crunch when everybody wanted to move in which direction, and I'm wondering if they did that.
Yes, they did that. Yeah, they, they evaluated the peak hour, when there's most traffic generated, and then looked at the increase in trip ends from the proposed project. You know, they do the survey, the existing counts of traffic, then they, they took a conservative approach to estimate summer volumes, added the trip ends, and then they evaluate the intersection, safety of the intersections, the wait times at the, at the intersections, they looked at high crash locations, level of service.
So, so forgive me, but that obviously would affect the speed of traffic if you've got longer delays. So from a, from a safety point of view, the longer the delays would seem to have a slightly improved safety, other than cars being able to speed up along there without having to stop?
Oh, onto seventy-seven versus Hill Way?
Well, seventy-seven, I thought, would be a dangerous intersection anyway.
Right.
Ours coming up and down there, everything the town planner had to say about, about that. I'm just wondering about Hill Way. Obviously, it's a narrower road, but I just don't see the amount of traffic coming up and down there from ten apartments.
Right.
That's personal, so I'd rather have the, the official, you know, to see what, what the actual impact would, the special impact would be.
Right. And that's what the traffic study did, and that's what, you know, Main Traffic Resources could, I'm sure she'd be glad to come to the next meeting.
Is there, is there a report?
But the report was provided in the.
It's in there, Henry.
Yeah. And the, and the, you know, and the review comments by the town engineer are real insightful as well, you know, talking about the assumptions made and, 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 you know, his, his perspective on, on it, and.
Yeah, I just wanted to add as well that when we first looked at the site, we looked at several options for egress and access, and the concern that I had, and this is before you had your site, well, this was months before, was the exiting site distances, you would have to approach Route seventy-seven. You have, you're on a curve, you're actually on the outside of the curve, you've got a grade change in a slope, and we're also looking at an elevated drive that would've had to drop about twelve feet down onto seventy-seven. So you take the combination of those three, just from a liability and a safety standpoint. It was really a very simple decision to avoid that catastrophe on Route seventy-seven. The fact of the matter is, there, I've heard expressions of speed on Hill Way. It's mighty interesting that the town is looking at Hill Way as a, as a rebuild. I've seen in many instances where you have a literal fork in the road, where the road is actually brought down into more of a ninety at the intersection. I don't know if that's in the current plan, but I think it would go a long way to allay the fears of, of the, the neighborhood to prevent that. Basically, Route seventy-seven, if there's no de-acceleration going to Hill Way, that's, that's the biggest concern. What you have from this property is two driveways that have ample room to stack for any traffic that might be on Hill Way. So really, the inconvenience, if you will, would occur on the property waiting to get onto Hill Way. The traffic study didn't show that as, as an issue. And as John mentioned, and to your point, they look at the, the levels of service of operation during the peak period when it's likely to occur, and they stated that there was no impact. I'm also not a traffic engineer, I don't know if there are any in the audience, but again, I know that your town engineer concurred with the findings. And again, if you wish us to delve into that in more detail, I would only request that you have your expert witness on your end as well. This is really not a subjective thing with traffic, it's a science, and traffic engineers do this all the time, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Maureen, could you perhaps, perhaps what's going on with respect to the plans for Hill Way?
I'm looking for the comments that the Public Works Director sent just this afternoon. I know the planning board received them, I know that we sent them to the applicant as well. And, no, they're, they're in the stack here. So, but I guess I'll just paraphrase him. So the council established goals for the year, I believe it was December two thousand and fifteen, and that was before this project was submitted. So, you know, I, I hear what the members of the neighborhood are hearing, and everything you're talking about in terms of safety in Hill Way was something that is generally accepted because the council, when they established their forty-one goals last December, included a goal that says, "Develop a plan for the improvement of Hill Way." So the status of that right now is, it is just, there's nothing done yet. But there was a meeting with the applicant and the town engineer and the Public Works Director and I, just to make sure that anything this project was doing on improvements to the other side of Hill Way wasn't going to have to be undone or was going to undermine the work the town wants to do. The, the answer is, there's no scope of work even developed yet. But it's on the town council's to-do list. It's supposed to be at least begun by October. I know the town, town Public Works Director is working on it now. When the planning board had their sidewalk out there, we saw what a delightful sidewalk you have out there. Not good. So, I mean, it, there's no scope of work yet, but I think everything that I've heard, all you have to do is go out there in Hill Way and see what some of the problems are. You have almost a non-existent sidewalk, it's just, it, it really looks more like a paved shoulder, and you really need something that is above the grade of the road and is separated from the road so kids can walk there safely. Another item that was brought up out of the traffic study by this applicant is the existing condition of the crosswalk at the intersection of Hill Way and Route seventy-seven, which again, the kindest way I can put it is that a lot of our roads in Cape Elizabeth kind of adhere to a nineteen-sixties approach of find the quickest way to move cars. And that, that easy right turn uphill way makes it possible for people to not slow down when they're getting off of Route seventy-seven. And what really needs to happen, and what I will advocate for, and I'm not going to pick on anyone, but staff can only do what the council can finance, is that that intersection really needs to be looked at hard because I don't think it would take a lot to get it to be a lot slower. So we've got a problem with that crosswalk, we've got a problem with that intersection, and all of those things are there now, before this project ever came in. And the hope is that the council will authorize funding for an engineering study to actually evaluate Hill Way and come up with a scope of work for safety improvements. So that, that is, I, if I knew what the scope of work was, I would tell you, there is no written scope of work yet. The council is just now finishing up its budget process, and the expectation and the hope is that there will be some money in that budget to start the work. So that's, that's where I can give you an update on that right now.
Thank you. Victoria, does that handle your questions?
These are my high-level questions, but I will have some very detailed questions. If anyone else has.
Any other board members have?
Just one thing that we looked at, that I noticed, including the sidewalk, which would, which happened about a month and a half ago, was that when you, anybody who is, goes downhill way, sort of north out of town in the morning, could probably reflect on, when you look up, what Maureen was saying, to the right, it is tough to have that pitch on the road. Now, if you push that up about a hundred feet, which you would have to do for an entrance...
would, which happened about a month and a half ago, was that when you, anybody who is, goes downhill way, uh, sort of north out of town in the morning, could probably reflect on, when you look up, what Maureen was saying to the right, it is tough to have that pitch on the road. Now, if you push that up about a hundred feet, which you would have to do for an entrance, I think you'd agree that it gets even worse. So I think the applicant, in looking at the traffic study, um, that is here and is available, and I'd urge people to take a look at it, um, there doesn't seem to indicate that there's going to be a significant impact on Hillway. What Maureen just said, what I think brings up a bigger point, that the problems that we're hearing from the neighborhood about Hillway being a thorough, uh, being a throughway, people go too fast, they don't want to put their kids out there, um, that's a bigger concern that goes beyond this application. And I hope that we can address that as a town at a different time, because that's not what we're here to look at now, and those problems existed yesterday and they're going to exist tomorrow, until something gets done with that. So I hope we can all focus on what we're here, and that's what this application is coming up with. So I think, looking at what the applicant's put together with the two entrances on Hillway, to me as a board member, it makes the most sense for how this proxim, um, how this project is being brought forth in front of this board. That's just my personal view on, on the applicant and Hillway, so...
Thank you. Caroline?
I'm gonna go off Hillway, and one of the, uh, one of the people speaking tonight asked a question, they had a concern about a rain garden, they didn't understand what it was, and if you could explain to them what a rain garden is and what its purpose is, I think they'll like the idea.
Can you see it here? Or maybe on the grading plan, right there you go.
Yeah, the rain garden is, um, is simply depression, um, where water will gather, uh, flow down to gather, it's, it's planted with plants, um, and water will, the, the elevation, the invert, the rim elevation is a little higher than the, than the base of the rain garden, about six inches higher. Water will come down, um, it's all fully planted, and the idea is that that water will come in and, and seep down through a filter layer and be picked up by underdrain, um, below the rain garden. There's no standing water, that, so there's no mosquitoes or anything like that. It's not really meant for detention, it's more meant for, um, stormwater filtering and stormwater treatment, and it also slows down peak flows somewhat, so, so we added that in from the last, um, last meeting as well. We can talk more about the porous pavement as well, but those, both those, their stormwater best management practices are intended to treat stormwater runoff before it, um, enters the city system or town system.
I have a question, and I'm not sure who this is for, but I know a lot of people were concerned about the size of this project, and, um, one of the things I was wondering, and maybe I missed this at some point, is how this is considered two buildings, how the connector piece drops out as a consideration of it being a single building? I don't remember how we came up with that.
So, the, I mean, almost word for word, what our existing town center zoning says right now was adopted in ninety-five, and shortly after that, we did have a project on the north side of Town Hall proposed, um, it was eventually approv, approved, and, um, the plan, it actually was very well received by the planning board, but that's when the issue was raised. Can you have a connector between buildings? And the town center plan always recognized that you could have multiple buildings on the same lot. Uh, the question was, well, can you connect them, and how much of a connection is now it's all one building or not one building? And it really is the planning board's call on whether this is a connector or something more. Uh, but we have repeatedly seen proposals where people have been allowed to put multiple buildings on the single lot, and they've been allowed to do something with the connector that doesn't look like it's just one big building. Does that help at all? But this was something that got discussed with the code enforcement officer years and years ago, it's been through a planning board...
But it's not stated in the zoning ordinance anywhere, there's no requirement...
No. The zoning ordinance says that you can, your, your building can have no more than a five thousand square foot...
Right, but there's not, there's no talk about a connector or minimum distance between the buildings. That's, that's the planning board's purview to...
I will, I will look for, yeah, I will look for the exact language.
I looked at that this afternoon, so you don't...
So where it lists maximum building footprint of five thousand square feet, it says, "This limitation shall not prohibit the connection of a separate structure by a covered or enclosed walkway."
What page is that?
I don't know, 'cause I have an excerpt.
You have a stair in yours though, right?
Yeah, because of the grade change, it connects the parking on one level down to the medical space down below, it's a connector down to the medical office buildings.
When we're, we're talking about big, uh, big picture stuff, I just wanted to make one comment. There were a number of the folks here who spoke tonight, both in favor and against the, um, application, had a lot of questions about should, what if anything should be done with this parcel, if it was going to be developed, how much of it should be developed, and, and who makes those decisions. The, um, the, the social contract, if you will, is that a person who owns land can do with it what the law permits, and we have, we have land use laws, zoning, subdivisions, site plan, environmental laws and the like, and that really is what constrains the owner of the land and what they can do. Once they meet the recipe set forth in these requirements, they're allowed to do it, and it's, it's not our call to say, "Gosh, you know, just looking at this thing, it just looks like it's a little bit too big." We don't, in our system of government, have that power. And I don't think anybody in the board is indifferent to any of the concerns expressed tonight by the people in the neighborhood, nor are we indifferent to the, um, business plans of the, of the developers of the lot. It's, it's a balancing act that we, we, we try hard to live with. Uh, the, the safety issue, we've covered, and that's, that's a big one for us, the visual, uh, effect of this project is a big one for us, and we'll be talking about the landscaping and screening and buffering and whatnot to make this, this building sort of fit within the landscape. But it, it's not a black and white thing, you, you do have to appreciate that the, we have a system of laws that guides what we have to do. Um, so, nobody's interests are being overlooked, they, they may or may not be satisfied by the final decision, but we, we try hard to balance everybody's interests. Okay?
I have a question, I know this is...
Uh, no ma'am, the public comment period has passed. If we have a little time?
I have a comment. Nobody's addressed the traffic from Scott Dyer's...
We'll be getting...
...road to Hillway.
All, all, all the stuff we'll be talking about is, is the traffic study. Thank you. Okay, um...
There was one comment that struck me from gentlemen suggested pollution, was talking about the balconies having stuff stored on them, and I can't understand that, that it could look, it could look strange, um, and I wondered if at some stage, um, the owners of the building could, could address that, which is something that, it struck me as, you know, it could be viewed as a, an eyesore if people put too much stuff on the balconies, but that's my comment.
Yeah, I, I take Henry to be saying, would the applicant have some type of tenant regulations that would require the, the balconies and other tenant spaces to be, uh, kept in orderly fashion? Okay, thank you, Henry.
And just one thing further on what Peter said, it, the tough thing about being on this board sometimes is that when you get an applicant who owns a property, has done everything that they possibly can to be within the regulations, have listened to public comments, have listened to planning board comments, have gone on sidewalks with the planning board and really bent over backwards, um, to do what they are looking to do, and then have people who come up and obviously disagree with it, which rightfully they have a right to do, it's tough to balance those sorts of things. That said, is, my personal view of this is, this has been property that's been zoned as town center since ninety-five. It went on sale, um, by the previous owners who had been in this town for a very long time, friends of mine, I grew up playing basketball in that driveway of that, what's called the farmhouse now, but when property shifts and property goes to somebody else, you, to me, it's, it's something that you balance the community, but you also have to respect private property rights too. I think that what we've heard is glowing reviews of the applicants from a personal standpoint, but looking at what they've done and what they're offering this town, um, I, I think what they've done and what they're applying to do is something that I can support, because they've not just been good, they've considered everything when it comes to this town and what's in the regulations that they're allowed to be zoned for, and I can understand, if you're in a butter, that it could be a tough pill to swallow, however, that's, um, it's something that, to me, as a neighbor, you have to respect.
This is probably a segue into one of the other, uh, more detailed points, pardon me, but I was hoping the applicant's might give a little more detailed discussion of the landscaping and planting plan. When you see the, as a lot of you folks have seen the elevations in the plans, and when they're just starkly presented, it looks like this gigantic, god-awful mass of building, and I believe, at least as I understand the plans, uh, between the retained existing trees and, and foliage, and the very extensive amount of additional planting, uh, that's intended for the property, that the, the visual impact from Hillway, which I think is what has some of you folks upset, is actually perhaps not, uh, quite as bad as you think, and it, you may end up with a fairly attractive, um, frontal look at the, the part of the building where the, uh, chiropractic, uh, practice will be conducted. Could you walk us through, uh, in a little more detail, the, you know, identifying the types of plants and how big they are and so forth and so on? I know this is more detailed.
Sure. Let me zoom back out a moment here. Um, in your, in your packet, there's a planting plan, uh, that's keyed to the, uh, schedule that is also included on that planting plan. Uh, I think what you'll find is that in meeting with the tree warden and looking at the ordinance requirements, uh, following the sidewalk, looking at the topography, looking at the existing vegetation, what we've attempted to do, uh, at least around the perimeter of the project, is meet the requirements for the, uh, the plantings within the right-of-way that are a requirement of the subdivision. So along Hillway, you'll see that we have to either, uh, identify and recognize existing trees, or in absence of those, provide new. And that's what you're seeing down in this lower area of focus here, and again, as a result of your sidewalk and as a result of a fairly extensive review from the tree warden and discussions with our landscape architect, uh, this is the preferred plan. Um, John, if you have a, do you have the, the full, or a half-size sheet where you could read, for instance, um, it's, it's actually a little...
Could you provide some of the plants, the size and the...
Yeah, so that's what we'll do, and, um, I'll let John call out, for instance, the three, the three that you see along, uh, Hillway as an example, those are intended to be a street tree, uh...
While, while they're looking for those plans, if I could add something?
Sure.
Um, the board is aware of this, and I don't know if the public's aware of this, but the, the planning board has been working for months on, um, probably the most boring set of amendments we've ever worked on, they're called technical amendments. Um, they're, they're numbingly boring, but one of the things that we've been working on is there is a list of approved street trees, and we've been able to have, uh, we just have an incredibly talented tree warden right now. Uh, some of you might have seen his picture on the cover of the Press Herald last December, he's the expert on winter moths right now. Um, he is a licensed forester, he's, you know, spending a lot of time doing work with our trees, and because we were working on this ordinance amendment, we were updating our list of trees, 'cause some of the trees on there really just don't fit well in a new development. He came, met with the planning board, he's looking at climate change issues, he's trying to, he's inventorying all the town trees in the community, and as part of that work, he came to the planning board and said, "I really want to look hard at this tree list, I want the town to start thinking, uh, a little more longer term about the kind of trees we should be planting that would be more disease-resistant, more able to sustain climate changes," and, uh, it was a very, I think, I can speak for the board, it was a very interesting, um, session, and while I was listening to him go over this, it occurred to me that, um, here was a wonderful resource to actually look at a development plan. So, this is the only plan he's ever reviewed, and prepared a five-page memo of comments, which we then provided the applicant and said, "Do something with these comments." So, this plan has actually gotten a much more thorough review, not just of the new types of trees, but of ways to better preserve the existing trees. So we work hard to get people to try to preserve the trees through construction, but now we have this whole extra layer of review by our tree warden, and there's some techniques you guys have added to these plans that we've never seen before to better protect the trees we're trying to preserve. And, you know, let's say the worst happens, and a tree is identified on the plan as to be preserved, and it dies during construction. Uh, the town has the authority to require the applicant to replace that tree. So while we do want to preserve mature trees, um, if, if the worst happens, it's not like, "Oh, well, tried." Um, a remediation plan has to then come in to try to fill in those gaps that were, that were left open because the trees didn't survive. But this is a pretty hefty review, this is never, I've never been involved in a five-page memo from the tree warden before, so...
And I would just like to say that our landscape architect, Paul Brody, um, he was very respectful of the tree warden's review, um, there really, it wa, it was, he followed the, uh, the guidance provided by the, um, zoning documents. However, uh, what you have before you now is, uh, not only a meeting with that, but it also takes into account a little more diversity, uh, per the input from the tree warden. The locusts, which are the three, uh, there are shade master locusts that are on Hillway, by example, those are bald and burlapped, two-and-a-half to three-inch caliper plantings the day they're put in the ground. So that's, that's the, the street plantings. Um, over on Ocean House Road, uh, there are, um, proposed to preserve as much as possible. In fact, the relocation of the side, uh, the entrance walk that was brought up at, uh, by you folks at the last meeting, uh, from a ledge-out crop section, what we also found where out there is that we were actually able to work around the drip edge a little better from another tree, so another tree was saved over in that location as a result of that relocation. Um, we narrowed the circular drive, uh, the original plan showed, I believe, we had a twenty to a twenty-four foot wide, uh, drive around here that's been pulled back to eighteen feet, so basically two nine-foot lanes, um, uh, to, again, pull that back and also to move the sidewalk back over here, so we've actually pulled the impact away by at least six feet from that tree line, again, to move out of the drip edge and all that. So, uh, again, there's been a, uh, an unfathomable amount of time spent from a planting standpoint just at, uh, what is put not only for the, um, preservation wherever, uh, there's zero impact, but also out of the drip edge, but also, uh, care's been taken for things that people won't even see from, from Hillway. Again, this, there's about a three-foot, uh, berm, if you will, um, so in other words, if you're standing here on Hillway, at least in this point right here, uh, up through about here, this is a bit of a mound, that's the existing grades, it's about three feet higher than the center line of Hillway as you go up. When you're, when you're at this location on Hillway, at about elevation ninety-five, uh, if you're standing, uh, you're a little higher than seated in a vehicle, seated, you're approximately three feet off ground at ninety-eight, you're basically two feet below the second elevated floor, not the lower level. So you're basically looking at that, that deck plane, and what you have down below you, uh, in, in grading and embankments, and as John called it, sort of an amphitheater, as Jocelyn mentioned, is an amphitheater, we've got, uh, uh, slope plantings, greens, uh, there's a set of stairs that goes down, and again, the, the thing to remember is that this is tucked into the side of the hill, it's not sitting on top of the hill, it's literally, literally cut into the side of the hill. In fact, this whole elevation here, if you look at it, is actually, you're looking at a, a patio that serves the units that are on the, all... a patio that serves the units that are on the, we'll call it the 100 elevation, with this being the 90 elevation. The 90 elevation lives down in here. This is actually at and slightly higher than Hillway in this location, at the, I'm sorry, the 100 elevation. So you exit onto a patio, and then there's a, basically a planted embankment here, much like a front yard, again, meeting with the standards that slopes down to Hillway. So you're actually looking up at a, what would traditionally be a two-story residential structure. Again, the commercial side is really down, almost fully contained in this, this lower level as far as visibility. And I do think, one of the things we did by turning off, oh, shoot, let me get out of here a minute. Turning off, again, we focused on the, eliminating the tree opacity because your focus was on the architectural standard of the building. And it occurred to us in talking as of late that there's been a lot of concern about what would you see from, from Hillway? A lot of folks were talking about, you know, as they walked out Rand Road and entered. So what you see here, and these are the larger existing trees that are being preserved in that, that mounded area that I just described. And then these, this is one, two, and then there's a third of these locusts. Now, is this a locust in the model? Not exactly, but I have to say, if you Google a locust, you'll see that it's somewhat slimmer to this in profile and density when it's, when it's there. So you will see veiled looks through at the building. What you don't see here is, again, the reality of, when you're on the site, there's about a two-to-one exaggeration for what, when you look at a map or in a 3D elevation. We left this at a one-to-one, so it's a literal one-to-one representation. We did not exaggerate the scale, but for anyone that's looked at topography or things, it just, whenever you look at a map, it always seems too flat from, from reality. What you'll really see here is the fact that this is down, in fact, you can't see it, it's down behind the green here, down in that elevation 90. John, did you have anything else to add to that?
Just a point on this, on this image, that it doesn't show all the understory in there, and there's no plans to, to cut back on the understory on there. So I think it looks even a little bit more open than it will once, because that, that area is really, we're staying out of that area completely.
And if you look at...
So can you go back to the planting plan one second?
Yeah.
So you're talking about the understory right in this area?
Yeah, that's right, right in this area. And that's where that view from Rand over in that direction.
I'm glad you raised concerns about the grade, when you do that grading to cut the amphitheater, about cutting into the roots of some of those trees in there.
In this area?
Those were adjusted from the first presentation and even the second. You'll see is that where these grades tie in within the drip edge, you will not see contours cutting into the drip edge, which is sort of the, we don't like ever to get within or more than 30% of impact inside a drip edge. In this case, for these were, again, given the survey and the distance we were given for the drip edge, it appears to me, except for maybe 15% of this lowest tree that's right at the intersection where we're, we're not even cutting a foot, that we're not in that drip edge in those locations, at least for the larger trees.
And following the, the site visit with the tree warden, there's some big oaks up in this area, and, and that drive comes through. And one of the solutions is to put a perforated pipe around, you know, where you're, where we're filling in underneath in the drip edge, this perforated pipe plan to go around there to provide air circulation to the, to the surface.
Can you just show where Rand Road is?
I'll be right around in this area.
Are there any of the mature big oaks on the Hillway side this project left?
Yes.
Where have you left when you have entered the...
Pardon me, sir?
They're all, the, the public part is all.
There's a 30-inch, just to, I guess, to answer a question from the board, those trees, there's a, if you look at sheet LP 101, you'll see noted that there's a 40-inch oak, a 30-inch, and a 15.
It's a nice hickory in there, too, that'll be staying. And the other, one of the other comments of the tree warden, that some of the ash trees may not last.
The help is not...
So we're, he suggested planting some hickories in place of where those ash trees are now. So that's, that's an example right there of one of the hickories that we're planting. And, you know, if, if that happens to, if one of those ash trees, you know, the health is questionable.
This is off-topic from what we're talking about here, so if anybody has anything related to this.
Victoria?
I do. I would like to talk about the view from Route 77. That view, are you, are you making an attempt to buffer when you're, a car or pedestrian is walking on 77? Are you attempting to buffer so that you can't see this project? Or are you attempting something like an aesthetically pleasing transition from a public right-of-way to the private right-of-way? Which one are you attempting to do?
Right, so the current plan shows, and these are planted down at about three to, anywhere from three to four, how many feet down below the finished floor of the resident, the 100 elevation, John?
What are those?
And those are...
Spruce.
Those are evergreens?
Yeah, those are the evergreens, and I'm looking at the elevation here. I think those are...
I guess I am a little...
So they're, they're really screening, screening the corner of the commercial corner so that, in effect, you're looking over what is really a screen, we tend it as a screen under this plan, to screen maybe the lower story of that corner of the building. So what you're seeing is a two-story residential from Ocean House.
How much will it screen? Will it go all the way and screen all the to, I mean, I'm a little concerned about evergreens that close to the building.
Yeah, these are...
I don't know if there's some other type of planting, but, and I'd like to hear the, you know, any reaction from the board, but I'm a little concerned about evergreens that appear very close to the building.
Right, so that's why we actually proposed two options, because what we're, we're sort of getting too, it's somewhat internal to the site, but it impacts what is seen from Ocean House Road. In some of the comments received, the formal comments from the tree warden, it appeared that there was more of a screening approach desired. However, in some of the conversations with you folks, there was a sense that a carefully-designed opening, if you will, that would be more in feeling like a manicured or a, or a residential front yard. So what we have are actually almost two, two opposing views here. You have this, which has the evergreens, which if, again, if properly maintained, like any foundation planning that's, if not cut, will be over in eve height. It's, it has to be properly maintained. Again, these are planted almost at the lower elevation. If properly maintained, those can be kept so that they're not obscuring the view of the residential stories, if you will. They're down below the driveway, they're down below this parking lot. And as you're looking up a hill, what you have to remember is you're looking up a fairly large incline here, you're almost looking over the top of those at the structure. This rendering, again, at the one-to-one, right here, whoops, it's, it doesn't show, I mean, this goes down below. So these evergreens are sort of down in a, in a zone on the other side of the driveway, down three or four feet, right around here. So what they would screen is probably, you know, this portion of the building, would break up this corner of the building. So your focus and our thought and our, the cues we were getting were that you would see this part. In fact, we brought the walk and swept it in through here. So what we're now hearing is maybe a little more open, maybe a little more ornamental, flowering trees. We've given two options that use more of a fruit tree, there's some apple. One is ranging in a more formal setting here that sort of draws you into the walk, and this one's more of a bar oak session where you have almost two side plantings. So we're willing to go in either direction. We just would like some direction from the board because the ordinance is not, there is not a buffer requirement that is, excuse me. We feel that we've met the yard. This is getting internally in the site, and it's really affecting what is more of a feature. Again, that feature, if you recall, was added for the pedestrian connection on Ocean House Road to an existing sidewalk, and also to provide that visual connection that you desired at, I believe, our first or second workshop, so.
So can, yeah, option one is blocking, and option two?
No, option one, these, the existing plan, if you will, is more of a buffer, more of a visual screen. It closes it in, and it brings it in pretty tight.
Okay, so option one is more buffering?
So...
And option two?
No, no.
So the, the current proposal is more blocking.
Okay, current is...
And what we have are really two options and just really different configurations that one is a little more open, and, again, it brings a much broader feeling of, of a front yard that's ornamental out to Ocean House Road. This one is, is a little more, I won't say refined, but subdued from that. It's, it's not quite as formal.
Both options are meant to provide a framing, you know, of you for the building, yeah, sort of screening.
Option one, a little bit more color, a little bit more...
These are the same, same plantings, just arranged in a different fashion, so it's really, but again, these are more of the colorful, the flowering, the fruit. We don't have any directly over sidewalks that leads to issues with tracking and birds and other things on the walk that we don't want to have in the...
Well, one thing, maybe we can get some comment on this or questions, I think the, the concept in the village center is that the space between the front of the building and the, and the main street, 77, if you will, should be attractively landscaped. And I think there, the ornamental plantings would be very important. On the other side, on the Hillway side, I, I think the, the emphasis ought to be perhaps even more than you have now is for screening. It would be for, at least to, at the eye level, so it's not likely you're looking at a three-story building.
So what we have here is the right to the T, in fact, it almost came out of your town center playbook for the, the visual that's created. It's a little hard to see here, but what you have is actually the profile of Hillway. This is, this is taken at the face of the building at Hillway. The grade would actually continue down, and this is going to be almost impossible to, to draw here in a straight line, but basically, Hillway is at about this elevation at this point, and then slopes down along here till it intercepts down about the lower driveway. So you can see how much lower that is than the Hillway profile. So this part, which is fairly close to Hillway as required, has to be within 25 to 35 feet, that planting scheme is much more residential. It's, it's a patio, it has the types of plantings that you envision in the town center, and it brings it right out to the street. It has a, a set of stairs. We believe that this area here meets almost, again, it's right out of your diagram for town center and what you envisioned bringing to the street. The other identifiable entrance for this footprint here traverses here through a walk up a set of stairs as well. So this portion also, and there are many examples in town where the house is not higher than the road, it sets back a little bit and is moving down, where you have the same thing, where you go down and into the structure. So really, these two situations, one is elevated, one is down, they really represent the two situations that you find not only in the town center guidelines, but also elsewhere in town with residential landscape. This area, with the exception, is, because of the preservation, is as it is. The grades are left where they are. It just happens that they're slightly higher than the road, and it just happens that this is where the 30 and the 40 and the 15-inch oak and other trees are kept. And we failed to mention, right at the entrance as well, more of a screening as you come uphillway, but there's also some flanking plantings here that are probably in the three-to-five-foot height range. So I wouldn't call them an understory by any means, but they're certainly taller than the ground cover, so that actually helps fill it in as well. So really, we have that, that situation, the lower entrance to the building situation here. Remember, this is our front. This is, we have several fronts, but what we're trying to do is, is acknowledge your request not to ignore Ocean House Road, even though in our mind, it's, it's really not the back because we've designed all sides of the building to act like the front. It also feels like sort of an entrance or a front yard, if you will, from Ocean House Road. It's not just blocked off. So we, what we're hearing is to allow more of the view of the building by eliminating some of the evergreens and maybe keep one as a specimen tree, like you might have where you're not trying to block the structure, where you're trying to reveal the structure. And, again, more ornamentals down in this area, more flowering, more colorful. And, again, we would, we would come back with really, I think the selection was in concert with our landscape architect's chat with the tree warden and subsequent discussions with staff and others through input. So really, it's a matter of preference on, on how it's arranged. And we, we could come back with either of these. And as you'll see here, they did remove the five or the four or five evergreens here, and I think it kept one.
So my question for the board is, do you want what we, what they currently are showing, or do you want to go with an option one or an option two?
Can I make a point before?
Yeah.
So when we first started talking about the presence of this entrance on 77, I mean, we talked about, even though the, the cars are not entering there, that it is a significant pedestrian entrance. And I think, in my mind at least, I was thinking of something quite a bit bigger and grander in terms of an entry, not, maybe possibly even something with a cover to it that you walk through and under. And I feel like the pickets, the little picket fences are really just not quite cutting it.
So right, so what we have is a, and again, the rendering that we were able to pull, the, these are the placeholders to show location. What we're looking at is, and you'll see in the plantings, that it's, it's something much more residential, much more gate.
Yeah, but that's, that's like the corner of a lot in the suburbs. I don't, I don't see that as a...
But, well, again, our, our landscape architect, you showed two of these flanking the drive. It feels like a gate, it feels like a path. I guess, you, you mentioned a substantial amount of pedestrian travel here. Most of the destination, if you will, for other services in town are headed uphillway with the new sidewalk on Hillway.
Yeah, but it's not actual, it's virtual, as you drive by it.
Exactly. And this, how used this will be, I don't know, but I think from a visual standpoint, we're satisfied that these flanking the walk as opposed to just a flat walk with just planting absolutely will signify the fact that it's, it's a path. There'll be no question that it's flanking it as a path.
I gotta agree with Joe. I'm not, I don't know if you need that fence, so I want to look at the landscaping options. But once again, I want to throw this out to, I want to hear from everybody.
I, I actually like your idea of having a cover at the top and making it a focal point because then takes the eye up there and looks like there's a real entrance there.
Like a, not a trellis, but a, yeah.
I mean, I, I really, when he said it, I thought...
A garden, a garden entrance gate or something.
Well, you know, I think it just, just adds that panache to it.
I had a sense, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we looked at it, and the layout is a little bit unusual because of the 77 and Hillway, but sort of in, in concept, if not reality, the front of the project for the commercial side was Hillway, because that's sort of where it looks. And the, for the residential units above, really, the front yard, if you will, is looking out at 77.
Right, and I think that...
But I don't think actually too many people are going to come grouping up and down 77.
No, but making that into something was a way of compromising.
Yeah, but I, to me, with, with plantings, that would be a nice thing, the idea of a bigger and more elaborate overhead or something, I, I don't see the point, because it's not, I don't think it's going to be used a whole lot for approaching the building.
It's visual, not so much for use, it's a visual impact. And it also, you know, it's for a visual impact, and it also would, would reduce to a degree the size of the building, because you'd see this right up front, and the other is removed, so you get the optical illusion that the building is smaller.
Okay, I'm going to go the opposite way. I think, to me, what's important is to reduce the mass of the building as you're driving up 77. I'm not a landscape architect, so how you do that, I'm not 100% certain. Having an entrance into that walkway that with plantings, to me, it doesn't even need a fence. Plantings on either side of a walkway would cover it. So I'm kind of on the other side. I, I understand Victoria's point about too many evergreens up too close to the building, but I think they're important to kind of cut off the size, to help with the scale of the building from that perspective, so. perspective. So. That wasn't much help, was it?
Well, we're, we're, we're sort of getting input through the locations, and I know the ordinance is, it's really very subjective in that area. Um, our responsibility to our applicant is to meet the standard, to, uh, take your cues and to try to, uh, where some of those maybe subjective areas to, to go there. I will say that we did present, uh, early on out of the first or second workshop, our intent for the path and what we were proposing, what we brought before you is consistent to that. Um, I leave it up to the applicant. I mean, we can, my concern is that, um, we have other issues that, um, are, uh, capital expenditures by the applicant that are not on the property that have been made as part of the requirements of the ordinance. And this one is, um, maybe, what I would suggest is that we, we, what we've done meets or exceeds, uh, any written requirements. And again, at this point, it's subjective. I think I, I can stand here before you and say that you will absolutely know that there's a walk there, that it, that it identifies the entrance to a walk and that with either option one or two, that it is, is colorful, vibrant. Uh, one of the elements, uh, as you mentioned, approaching is the gateway property. I heard that mentioned earlier. We have viburnum. We have persythia. We've got a fairly, uh, again, to the extent that we're not planting on the town property over here, um, this, this edge here. So as you're looking up, if you're coming up and sweeping up Ocean House Road, uh, you're basically looking over a, which should be a fairly colorful, uh, planted, uh, area across this whole facade and looking up at, again, up at that second, third, more of the residential load. Yes.
So am I hearing that you are going to go with either option one or option two?
There's really three options. The one that we proposed.
Right, there's the, so that's why I'm wondering, are you going?
Right, there's the current proposal, which if, if you're fine with it, we feel it meets. We felt, um, that it was, um, providing the, the cues from both the tree warden for more of a visual screen and breaking up the mass. Uh, but what we're hearing today is that you want something more visual, more open, if you will, to Ocean House, which these options are providing a new, uh, insertion of plant type.
So are you still looking for direction from the board?
We would love direction on that.
Okay, and then I'm kicking it back to the board again. Does the board want to go with what's current or option one or option two?
Thank you.
Let me make one, one suggestion, at least for me personally. I, I think that's, what's in the plans right now isn't, isn't quite it. And I think what would be really good, if you come back to the plan, excuse me, that would take option one or two, or, you know, what's your recommendation for, meeting Caroline's point about breaking up the lines of the corner a bit, but more focusing on ornamental plantings so that when you drive, uh, south of 77, you're coming into Cape Elizabeth, you see this area and think, wow, that's attractive. That really looks.
Then I would, I would take option one. One of these options would be.
Yeah, but the, the second half of the thing is I, if you would rethink, think a little bit more about the amount of screening that is going in on hillway. So that if you're standing on the street in hillway looking at the, at the property, how, what can you do about, you know, breaking the mass of the building with, with streetside plantings?
Right, so.
To, to further enhance the screening.
So I'd like to break that up, if I could, into the, really the three different situations. I presume you're not talking about the area where we are.
No.
Required to bring the building right to the street. You would not screen that or there would be.
No, that's fine unless.
This, this area as well, where we go, um, you're going down, uh, four to five or six feet below grade.
That's fine.
It's really this area here that you're looking for maybe some supplementals. Again, to the point where we're not.
In the back.
Disturbing, um, where are you referring here?
Does, does anyone have any questions about the plantings on hillway?
On hillway.
No, well, do you?
Yeah, I, I think that this was mentioned by one of the speakers. I think you're going to need a site section that really shows that relationship of the sidewalk. Well, actually, right through Rand Street. It would include maybe two or three houses on Rand Street, the street.
Yeah.
And the relationship with that sidewalk and going down into the building.
And what we've done here is actually a little bit better. This is actually a, uh, 3D model of the property and the surrounds. It shows you what you'll see when you're standing.
Well, you don't see, you don't see the buildings on Rand Street. You don't have a sense of.
Right, our, again, um, the concern that I understand is not what I see of the, the abutting properties. The concern is what they see of our property, which is the purpose for this. I, I guess, um, I'm a little concerned that we're modeling or rendering things, and I don't want to dismiss the need to look all around, but there, the, the time and, um, effort to put this together for this application, we believe these, uh, go, uh, far and above over what's required to demonstrate what's been done for the plant and the visual screen.
Well, there's an enormous amount of angst expressed over the size of this building, and I think a site section would go a long way in helping people see what's going on. I think it would benefit you.
Can I, can I just ask one question about this picture here? Is this from the sidewalk? Is it from the middle of hillway? Is it from across the street of hillway?
It's just taken right at the intersection of Rand Road and hillway on the, uh, Rand Road side of hillway.
On the west side.
On the west side.
All right.
This would be where you would be standing if you walk out Rand Road right before you turn and go up the hill.
Okay, so I'm looking across hillway at the location.
That's correct.
All right.
That doesn't show any, uh, lower shrubbery type plant.
Right, that's correct. This is the larger trees that are protecting all that. Right, we could absolutely provide you an update with, with the, uh, corner plantings, which would infill some of this corner. Again, we really don't want to get into putting too much under there. Now we're getting to the root system that we aren't supposed to disturb. So that's, that's sort of a.
Well, I, I just want to have the board, I want to wrap this up tonight. I really hate to bring them back. We're having our public hearing, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels about just trying to wrap this up tonight and just, do you want what's current?
Well, we haven't gotten to the building yet.
Right, we haven't even gotten to lighting. We haven't gotten to.
That's what I was gonna.
Do you just want to, can the board please pipe in on?
The lighting has been very patiently waiting.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, Maureen made reference to the new tree warden's report. And while I think it's wonderful that we now have a tree warden who is going into this extensive detail, I actually think it goes significantly beyond what our ordinances presently require. And I think this applicant has actually gone above and beyond what has happened in the town in the past to provide these various renderings, these various options, come back several times. And we have other issues to talk about tonight, but at least on the tree option, I think it would be wrong to require the applicant to come back yet another week with yet another set of drawings on this particular issue. I think we should just give them some direction and then leave it for perhaps some kind of final review, um, by the town, you know, like we often leave some things unresolved. But it seems to me that what we're trying to do is, do we want screening of that three-story corner? Yes, we'd like some, but we also need to respect what the town center zone says, that you're trying to create a villagey kind of entrance look on 77. So we want both, but we don't want, it, we can't have everything. So it's a balance between those two. It's not an either or. And to me, that's the direction. And I think you're coming quite close to that with your option one.
So, right, one thing we could do that, um, might help, and it's done on any of our, uh, projects such as this, uh, publicly funded projects, we were, we require that prior to planting, that all the locations are basically staked out and located on the site. If it would be, uh, a pleasure of the board, we would be glad to have the review that include not only our landscape architect that would approve of those before planting, again, not costing the applicant additional dollars to move, but saying, this is where we really want it to go. We've been, uh, they've been very open to, uh, the substitutions in kind and in size, if you will, with the tree warden. And I see no reason why if, if, if there's a preference to locate three or four things further this way and that way, it's no additional, it's not rework, it hasn't been done yet. That's the time to do it. That's where it can really, what I'm concerned of is that we're trying to do on paper what is probably best done right, as you saw in your sidewalk, right down on the ground where you see, you know, right here is gonna fill that in or that's gonna block it. And I can tell you with the, with the planting schedule and the location here, somebody I presume at the town level is gonna go down through these and then say, where are these all put on, on the site once approved? So we know you're getting these in this basic location, and we will specifically want to know where they go. So again, I would offer that out as it's not a, uh, it's really allowing you the assurance that things are just where they want to be. Within, you know, with, we're not, I guess it's fine to move it from one end of the site to the other. We just need to know where, where's that going? But right now, this is where the, the sort of the master plan is going.
But I think we can also give you a sense as to where we're leaning here. Personally, I think option one is kind of looking good as long as it still provides some screening for that corner of the building that will probably look a little bit massive from 77.
I see that one as more of a keyhole, and that's what I heard is you, to have it both ways, you have a glimpse of the building, a tasteful glimpse through what is truly a keyhole. You have a fairly open area here, but then you also have the existing plantings that exist here and here. You have a walkway through, and what are you seeing when you look through that at the building? And that's really the focus as opposed to just trying to block that up. So.
Yep.
Because we have a lot of other, I suggest that we agree in principle that we would like to see something along the line of option one.
Great.
After you've thought about our discussions.
Absolutely.
So are we assuming they're coming back just to present?
No.
Or are we just gonna say we like option one and move on?
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Does the board, yeah, are we?
Yes, Victoria.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's move on then.
Well, what we can say, option, option one, we're good on landscaping?
Yeah, yes. I have other questions that I've been waiting.
Are you people good on the, on the screening on the backside?
Yes, let's give them some direction and move on. Yes.
Okay. Option one.
All right, my other, my other question while you're up here, could, uh, there was a concern brought up by one of the neighbors about, um, the location of any sort of a garbage dump or not dump, but store.
Dumpster.
Dumpster, thank you. And I just was hoping you could point that out on the plan. I know where it is, but I would.
Right.
Tell the public.
So again, this plan is a little bit out of phase, uh, but it does show up, uh, better on this. I can then switch over to the black and white. It's shown over here.
So that's afar in by the Cumberland Farm, old Cumberland Farms?
Right, the old Cumberland Farms is here. It's against, uh, and again, this is, um, out of our control, but vegetated and probably with the setbacks, not much could ever go there. Um, it's also in a place where the truck can, uh, get in, back in, remove, and then take it out. Uh, with turning around, it's also as far back from hillway as we can get over here.
Okay. And my other question, I was hoping you could, um, address the, any exterior lighting.
So John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're all LEDs. We're all.
Correct.
Cut offs, down facing. Uh, basically, it would comply with the dark skies requirement of a publicly funded project in the state of Maine. So no upward facing lighting.
Okay, and there was a study done just for the public.
A photometric plan was submitted as part of the package.
But Maureen has come in then.
You had a couple of places where you leaked over at .5-foot candles over the property line. I'm assuming that you.
Cut offs.
Do what you need to do to make that work.
They need cutoffs at those locations.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, I was looking at the lighting plan, and, um, the town engineer made this request when we were first here, and it wasn't added to the plan. I'm assuming you're going to be adding it, but, um, you took off the labels. You once had labels that said A, A1, A2. I would actually like to see on your isometric plan, um, something like you do with your plantings. I want to see labels, the A, the A1, the A2 come back on.
That key them in, right. Those, those are actually not light types.
Right, those were.
Were they?
Those were referenced to the, um, the level.
Basement.
Basement.
The apartment levels.
Floor and second floor.
I still like them. Anything that we'll say is that last time you had like five of these. I mean, just look with your planting. I'd like to see a key that, so our code enforcement officer can take out your isometric and they can say, there's five of these types. And then I want the manufacturer's type so they knows exactly what it is. I also want to have on that, um, let's see, it would also have, so the lighting labels, um, I want the wattage so we know exactly what the wattage should be. Um, also the height of each of the mountings.
So I, on sheet two on one, we took off the confusing B for basement. You have a light.
Is that what all that was?
You have a light schedule.
Right.
It's on the sheet in the upper left corner. It lists type A, A1, and A2. It lists the height, the wattage, the type of lighting.
Can that be on your isometric?
Uh, it's, well, it's on our utility plan, which is the, the guiding document for the construction. And we could transfer that over there if you wish for the final.
Um, would that be confusing?
Just anytime we show it twice, it's have to be missed if we correct it once. So we'd like to keep it in one location.
So. Yeah, the, the, if you're concerned, if you want it for ease of reviewing .5-foot candles, it's better in the isometric plan. But if you want to actually get it built correctly, it's better where they've put it.
I guess we'll go with that. But as long as all of that was there, because I didn't see like mounting height and total numbers.
It's all there. And the cut sheets are part of the supplemental.
And I did have a question. There are absolutely no lights on this building.
Well, we're showing the site lights, just.
Yes, I agree.
But not the.
So there are absolutely no lights when you walk up to the door.
Right, like you have a porch and an overhang.
You're saying there are no lights.
Well, I'm not saying that. I will.
Okay, because I did not.
Ask the architects who are still designing the building. It may not have.
Ah.
Come there yet on, on like an overhanging entrance. If there's.
Back porch lane.
A can light or porch light, I can't answer that, but those are also downward facing and not outward projected.
But still, I think the code enforcement officer should know how many of lights are there on this building? Where are the lights located? Because right now, it appears there's absolutely no lights attached to this building, which doesn't make sense.
We know two architects that we will meet with and identify those on the planet.
Okay, I would like to see that so that the code enforcement officer, once again, will have that right there, right in front of them. And, because I know there's gonna be lighting underneath.
Well, that's right. There's a covered walk that has to be lit. So it's, it's lit from a can light. Again, those are sort of in the building at that point, but your, your point well taken. We'll, we'll identify those.
Okay, on the building. Yeah, I, I'm not so concerned that that's going to, uh, go into the street and that's gonna bother the neighbors. Maybe you could talk to, there is always concern about noise parking and lighting. Can you talk to what it means for the foot candles to be under a certain, you know, .5 and, and what effect a .5 candle, footlight candle would have if you're across the street in your home? Is that gonna be right into your, um, you know, living room?
Right, so there's, there's a couple of issues. There's direct line of sight and glare. These are all horizontally mounted with cutoffs that only direct downward. You have no horizontal projection. That would also be true of any lights that are, uh, under the, um, at the unit entrances. They're basically up in the ceiling like you would have a can light. And there's nothing in this room that is like that. Uh, basically, it's like in a residential home where you have a socket light that's up, that lights the walkway for safety. So you would not see those unless you're down below the plane for which the light exists.
Yeah. You'd have to be under the light.
You'd have to be under.
If you were in.
You'd have to be within the cone of light that's, that's projected here. From a distance, if you're, uh, you know, the 25-foot light and a hundred feet away, are you gonna see, you probably not gonna see the, you won't see the bulb. You may see that there's light near that, but you're not, it's not shining in your, uh, in your space. It's not like a wall sconce. It's certainly not like, um, most town lighting violate the dark sky standard with the, with the globes that shine off in all directions. So it's not that type of lighting.
Okay, thank you for addressing the lighting.
So are we satisfied with the landscaping on, on all sides of the building as we kind of left?
Do you folks have questions or comments?
I think we went with option one. I, I'm also.
Director?
We went with option one.
Well, that's option one.
Well, that's just.
This is the best.
Hillway, the top of the parking area, the buffer between, um, the two blocks. That's, everyone's good with that.
Yeah, my only other concern was the, the landscaping along hillway. And I was trying to get a mental picture. If I was walking down hillway, what would I see? And I, I think I've put it together. I'm not sure what you can do to make it any more clear. But there's the three big tree plantings you're doing. There is a raised mound. So it sounds like visually what you'll see is sort of two and a half stories, at least half of the basement level will be cut off visually from the streets. Is that correct?
Right, and again, this was not prepared for that purpose. It was prepared really to show straight on building elevation. But when you're in hillway out here, um, you are, you're coming out a patio, you're going down a grade, down to a sidewalk, and you're over in hillway here. So what you're looking at when you look downhillway here is this elevation. You do not see this portion of the building. And what you'll see is, uh, at least within the right of way, you'll see the new, uh, locusts that are planted. And then on the property side, you'll see the oaks at the end. So it'll be very residential feeling. Again, further uphill, you're, you won't see a good deal of this building because it's blocked by the existing farmhouse. So again, as you go down the street, you're gonna see what feels like a, a cadence of residential structures.
This is all the buffering. This is all the buffering between the residential zone and this property, and that is a subjective agreement. It's a little more robust.
But the part, right, the part on hillway where you get really close is very prescriptive. That actually is almost a menu of what to do with the plazas, the seating, the, or the, the lower ground cover. And again, that's why we kind of broke it up into the three different types.
Well, I think you've done a good job on the, the added plantings.
Yeah, this is much darker on the wall than it is even on the screen, so perhaps Maureen can share this, this drive. She'll be able to send it on the PDFs. For some reason, the lighting on the wall is a lot darker than we're seeing on the screen here.
Are you all set, Peter? I don't want to cut you off.
I, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, well, we're back to landscaping. I'm gonna bring up fencing. On sheet C504, item J5, that's the detail for your white picket fence. Thank you for adding that. I was very confused, and so thank you for adding the white picket fence. I noticed it did not indicate the height. It did not tell which post cap model you've chosen or the post option you've selected. So I just want to point that out, that when you do submit this.
What was your, I'm sorry.
It was, so sheet C504.
Yeah.
J5, white picket fence.
Gotcha.
I, I didn't see the height, and I didn't see which post cap model or post option you selected.
Gotcha. So on the right hand, there's a table on the detail that shows in a D elevation.
Does it have the height there?
And we've given you an option of three, 4.24 or 5.
Right.
We've given you all the dimensions for all four of options for that fence.
Just, I mean, does the board want to get into the detail on, on the height of this? Can we just ask the applicant to choose one?
And the plan calls the height?
It just, if nothing's there, so once again, when our code enforcement officer goes out.
You bet.
And I really don't want to get into the merits of the height of the post cap they're choosing. Anyone? No. Can you, just when you return these, have that level of detail?
Yes.
Nope? Okay. And back to the fencing, could you show the fencing that's going to be in the back? Once again, on the Route 77 side, where that fencing is going to be?
Well.
Do you have?
Yes, I can show you on the plan, and then again, it's, this is.
You just do a big picture.
This is the feel, and obviously would flank either side, then there's additional plantings, and those are shown.
But the, not the white picket fence, fencing the.
The dumpster enclosure?
Oh, the dumpster enclosure?
No, not the dumpster enclosure.
The walkway, be in the dumpster enclosure. Is there fencing that runs along that property line?
Right, can you show that?
Sorry.
What I would propose out to the board is, once again, we're talking, sort of like when we were looking at the library. This fencing is, is gonna offer the Cumberland Farms. And it sort of reminds me of how when we looked at the library, we ended up not putting a fence between the dentist's office and our library. We just went with plantings. And I want to ask the board, do you want that fence, that screening, for what purpose? And if you could just bring that up.
Right, so in your application, the PVC fence that we have.
PVC fence.
PVC is the product. It's not a PVC slat in a chain link fence. It's, it's a, the material is PVC. It's the same screening fence that we have at the dumpster is also one that we have along that narrow strip.
Right, if you could just bring that up.
Could you bring up the site plan?
Sure. I think so.
I've seen.
I just brought back the same plan.
Okay, I mean, is it?
Look, page.
Yeah, right there, or there, no, back, that one. Okay, that one shows the fence a little clearer.
So there's a PVC, it's called a PVC screen fence along here. Again, the discussion with the tree warden and those is that this, although vegetated now, there's no guarantee it'll remain that way, and so we have a screen there.
I believe, I believe a member of the board is suggesting that you may not need that.
May not need that.
I would like to throw it out to the rest of the board, though. We now know there's gonna be a dental, probably is gonna come for site plan review, a dental office commercial right on the other side of that fencing. And I just want to ask the board, do you feel that that fencing is necessary there? Given what we've already, projects we've already looked at within the town center and the screening we've been going with.
Can I just ask a question? Do you mean that there's gonna be a dental, we, we don't know that there's gonna be a dental office right on the other side of the fence. You're just saying in that, on that property.
I'd like to think the dental office will follow the town center rules and sit right on the street as we like to, I'm not sure what'll be in that exact corner. So do we need to put a fence in, I, I, that's kind of awkward for parking. There may be trees there. Are we fencing off trees from, I, I just, I want the board's input on, is that fencing necessary in this commercial zone, a commercial property to a commercial property?
My opinion is if that stays vegetated, then I don't think a fence would be necessary. However, we don't, not knowing what is gonna be proposed to be there, the applicant might want that fence to be there, but I just, I don't know. It's kind of tough to answer in a vacuum.
No, that's part of the buffering requirements for that side lot.
There's a buffering requirement?
Well, no, I mean, this doesn't say you need a fence.
We can admit the fence. That was added based on what were signals we thought we were getting to provide a stronger screen there. And again, we've heard less of that tonight, and it's more about opening and being inviting. The fence would not create an open or inviting situation, it would block it.
Maureen?
I mean, the applicant is proposing plantings along that entire area.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not like it's gonna be totally stripped.
So I just, for the board, I'd like to hear back from the board.
I would say it's not necessary because it is commercial to commercial landscaped.
Yeah.
Plantings, I can, I can see pulling.
I mean, this, this one shows all the plantings along that edge.
Views from the.
I, I support Victoria's opinion.
Victoria, you're saying no fence, or not, not.
I'm, I'm just questioning why a fence, very heavy buffering to, to commercial lots, where I don't believe whoever comes in there is going to cite their building in that awkward corner. I don't even think there'll be parking there, I, because once again, it's an, it's a triangle.
Are we of a single mind that that fence is not necessary?
I'm not sure why we're buffering.
I would, I would say the fence is not necessary.
The fence is history.
We will eliminate the fence.
Rest of the board.
We will leave the fence around the dumpster as required for the standard.
We'll spend the money somewhere else.
Maybe we'll put it on an art.
In the L square.
Okay.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Other items of interest to the board, yes, Victoria?
Yes, I do. Your entry sign, you, could you please describe the new project signs? I don't know the dimensions, the details, will it be lit? Will the townhouses have their own separate sign? I couldn't find that level of detail on your project plans.
We showed the locations, the project signs with the details to be determined as we discuss them.
Right now, we only show a business sign, and it's, for lack of a better, it just says sign to show the representation of where it would be.
You probably should come back.
So you need to see a.
It's in our site plan review. We need to know the sign's dimensions and some details.
We'll show you the graphics of what might be on the sign. We can probably at least take a first stab at what would be there for the business.
I'm sure the graphics will be fine. Unfortunately, all the, we just need to know the size and the details, and.
Sure.
Will the sign be lit? Because if it's going to be lit, that'll have to go back into your isometric. And will there be a sign for the townhouses? Will there be a separate sign? Because that's not on your plans at all, so if it was an oversight or not an oversight, I just wanted to just clarify right now. Will there be a sign for the townhouses?
We don't, we don't have, you know, just a business sign.
It's just that one project sign at this point.
Yep, we'll provide details on the sign.
Moving on, moving on. So just, yeah, when you submit the plans, your sign just needs that.
The lighting manner and the size.
If you're going to light it.
Yeah.
But yeah, the dimensions and the details, yes.
And lighting at the sign isn't a concern?
Do I, without going to your isometric, we need to know.
Hey, sorry.
Henry has a question.
I have just one question, going back to lighting. The orientation of the apartments, are they facing hillway or are they facing 77, the living room? Because I guess living rooms have lights at night, and that would be much greater source of elec, of light than the lights shining down. So I'm just, I couldn't find the orientation of the apartments to which way they were actually facing. Maybe it's in there and I just didn't see it.
If I could help.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Unless they put in a floodlight and aim it straight outside, there's no way any of that living room light is gonna exceed .5 foot candles at the property line. So as long as it doesn't exceed .5 foot, they're meeting the standard.
Then I guess you've answered the question, thank you.
You're welcome.
Victoria?
This is probably my last one. So in our findings of facts, is it true that the applicant is requesting a waiver to the sidewalk along Scott Dyer Road, and should this be noted in our findings of fact? And I'm asking Maureen.
And I thought I had put it in there, and again, this is when you step back a step to subdivision review. And in the subdivision ordinance, it explicitly says that you can require a sidewalk on one side of the road. And there's already a sidewalk on the other side of Scott Dyer Road. So you can choose to explicitly say you're waiving it, or you can just approve it without explicitly saying you're waiving, waiving it, because there's only a requirement for one side of the road.
Okay.
There's already a sidewalk on one side of the road on Scott Dyer Road.
Okay, that answers my question. I don't need to add it to findings of fact unless somebody else wants to add it.
It's number three right now.
Oh, is it number three?
Right, the, the, what would hap, the, the reality is that you're proving, you're asked, you're being asked to approve three lots. The, is it lot three is the lot that has, it's on the corner of hillway and Scott Dyer Road in the town center. So anything that someone wants, unless, there's really nothing someone can do there without coming to you for site plan review, they have to comply with the town center design standards, and at that point, you would require the sidewalk.
Victoria, you all set?
Well done.
Jonathan, Joe?
Are we gonna look at the building?
Sure. Oh, I mean.
Can walkway.
Now or never.
Okay.
I think what's gonna happen, we're gonna give these folks a list of stuff to come back with for the next meeting, at which point the definitive.
All right, so I guess my first question for the architects, where are you? Are you still in, working on this, or is this a finished design?
Could you, sir, could you step up?
Hi, I'm Will Pogar, and I'm, excuse me, principal at WBRC in Portland. And to address your question, Joseph, we are in schematic design phase, probably midway through the schematic. We're trying to work through some of the, excuse me, again, work through some of the details in terms of its structure and so on and so forth. But really, the building plans and building elevations are fairly well fixed, if that's a question that you have.
All right, well, looking at the town center design standards, I just went through them. Question of scale, can you bring up the west elevation? And do you have one more that's not faded?
The black and white version, yes. These were to show you the.
Actually, well, okay.
What's that?
I was gonna say that's fine.
Okay, I'll put her back.
So I think the elevation on the right's working pretty well. It seems like, one of the public speakers pointed, referred to this as kind of brutal. And you got a lot of wall there, a lot of roof, not a lot of windows in there, and.
At, excuse me, at which level are you?
I'm talking about the top level.
Top level, okay.
You know, and I think that really it's, in many ways, it's that top level that gives the most character to a building when you're looking at it from any distance. And, you know, you mentioned that like the, this building's roughly the size of a library. Maybe in that vicinity, I think that was mentioned.
Well, the library is here.
Yeah.
And we are here by comparison.
Okay, so that, that piece is roughly the size. But I think what makes that library work is the windows are huge, so that the whole building is in scale. And I know you can't put those sized windows on your building, but it seems like there's a lot of little windows in a big expanse of space, and that's what.
So from an energy standpoint, we've, we've followed the, not only the, I guess there's a ratio on the building for, for the glazing, but we've also looked at from an energy standpoint.
Yeah, I, I would focus on the aesthetic, which I think that you want to pay attention to. And each of those windows, the double windows there are egress sized windows individually for bedroom.
Right.
One bedroom, so that they are roughly six and a half feet by five feet in dimension. And I think that one of, one of the things that could be done is the, what we discovered with the prescriptive measure of the town center standard, to have the roof pitch be seven and 12, is one of the scale factors that are out of our, out of our possession in terms of modifying, and that. Yes, and so that, that's one of the scale elements that we have to obey. We might be able to add a dormer on top of that to perhaps make the eve line go up and kind of undulate a little bit in one place or another.
It's our understanding that we cannot receive permission to say do a 512 pitch, that it has to be, the, the, the standard is very clear that it's 712.
That's a 1212, isn't it?
Well, they.
The main roof?
The, the main roof is not a 1212.
The, the one facing you here is 712.
That's 712, oh.
Under the roof you're talking about in terms of.
Yeah.
So right here, this, this is seven to 12 to the ridge. And again, another scale reducing feature is the fact that this wasn't taken out as a gable. It was brought down.
And, and I just, just to be clear, I think these other elevations, the ones facing 77 in this guy are fine in terms of addressing the surrounding neighborhood. I think it's mostly this three story piece that's, just, it needs some work to either break up the scale or just make it a little friendlier.
Okay.
It's my understanding, though, from, if you're standing on hillway, that the three story's gonna be kind of cut off at the basement level, correct? It's gonna be down below.
It is. In fact, I, I wish that we had thought about this before, and I think when we come back, I'd like to suggest that we add a, a dashed line if we could, so that you could understand the grade. It was carried out before, Robert, when you get a chance, I'd like.
Well, yeah, I wish, there's no way to annotate this to show the line on hillway that basically goes from here to an intersect down here.
Further down even.
It's even further down, so at this point, the hillway grade is at about half to top window height. So what you're really looking at is this part of the building down to about here. You're looking at.
The other thing I would say is that the, those decks are an important scale reducing factor. They project out in front of the building, so that this, looking on in 2D, it doesn't really show you what, how that will render in real life or true scale. So those, it'll go, step back in, and then go up, and each of the stories in the residential are exactly what you would find on any house in the adjoining subdivision or most places around Cape Elizabeth. They're only standard residential height. I think, you know, we, I, I, we'll discuss this, and we'll see if there's something we can do. Again, budget wise, we have to.
Share.
To, to, I wouldn't say protect the owner, but we have to obey what the owner is able to afford, so.
Right, we have to meet egress requirements. We have to meet or beat the energy code, which these allow us to do. Every time we put a window on a wall, we basically create a space where heat will escape. Triple glazed or not.
Would, I'm trying to think of some devices that we could use, the, you know, shutters or something that would, that might add something to the. or something that would, that might add something to the building.
Break it up.
In a way, well, in a way of ornament to the building that would break it up.
Change in siding color on the third, on the.
No, I don't.
Upper half residential. So I guess, how do we, how can we proceed so that at the next meeting, we're not looking at seven or eight? Is there a way to work with Maureen and look at, again, this is the subjective part? That's very hard to get direction from you folks.
Well, I just feel these folks, if they could.
No, I don't think you're far. I think you just need to apply. I mean, that's why I asked how far along you are, because I think this looks like you're still working through some ideas and.
Have you got like labels along that roofline up there?
Couple of skylights.
No, not.
You're, you're asking the applicant to try.
Yeah.
Without having any specific instruction. And the applicant is saying, we'll look at it.
I think they ought to come back next week, next month with what they consider to be the final.
What you'll, right. What we'll bring back, we'll have more detail on the window trim and some other things that may make it look more finished. If, I guess what you're looking for is, it's not finished. It's a schematic design. But in, in what I've seen as a non-architect is the more they do, the, the more detail it, it does present better. There's just more there to see, to your point, so. But again, from a, a basic configuration, we like to look in the field, the applicant likes to look in the field, the anticipated energy performance, meeting the code, it's really just a matter now, I think, of embellishing. I don't know if that's, if.
And one thing, I imagine the windows in the, on the bottom, I think, are five or six feet tall. And the residential windows are all four feet, which is.
They shouldn't be. If they are, then, then we will certainly adjust that to my, I guess I didn't check that, to be true, to be honest with you, but they would be.
I think it would look a little better if they were like four, six, four.
Well, four, you know, five, you know.
Can't go below, but.
Right. I, I quite agree. And that's, that's, is a requirement that they would have for egress out of those windows. So if they are at four feet now, then they have to be adjusted downward toward the floor line. We'll double check that, Joseph, and see.
Is there an opportunity by which we could share this information and receive input prior to the next? No. Formally, it has to be done in this setting.
I mean, as staff, I'm happy to look at progress stuff and try to provide advice, but in the end.
Has to happen here.
I have no vote.
I understand.
So it's, it's clearly the decision of the planning board.
Yeah.
And we don't want to design it. We will, we'll respect your design, absolutely.
We, we would like the design to be pleasing, but we also, as you know, need to obey the limitations of the owner's financial parameters. And we'll, we certainly will give some more thought to it if you're willing to do that.
Joe, you all set on building issues? Any comments from inside Elaine?
I just had one more question on page, plan number CD one oh one.
Can you just move up on the microphone?
Okay, I'll try here. There's a note on page CD one oh one, note two. It says, that talks about clearing limits, and they can't, they, it says they can't extend beyond what's shown without approval of the project landscape architect. And I would think any clearing that's not shown on the plan would also require approval of the town. If you're talking about clearing areas of the property that are currently vegetated, all of that needs to be shown. You see what, I'm, you see that, what a note I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Similar to the notes that we're making about changing the plant specifications. I think you just need to add, and I'm sure this is just a construction document, and it's written in construction document language, but for site plan approval purposes, we need to note on this document that the town approvals would be required.
We'll revise it. Yes, that's correct. This is obviously set up for a formal agreement between owner, contractor, and.
Right.
With us as a third party, so.
And that resulted out of the, our conversations with the tree warden to, to show, to reinforce the fact that we're not going to do any clearing in the areas that are shown not to have clearing.
We just need to change it.
So it wasn't to say that, it wasn't like to allow additional clearing, it was to say, hey, if it doesn't say clearing, we're not going to be in there, to reinforce that point. So typically, that note isn't on the plans at all.
For the, for the planning document, we will remove without the written approval and just stop it at will not go beyond that shown on this plan.
Does that sound?
That would work.
If it were, we would have to seek your approval and then grant the contractor approval. So in a way, this is still valid, but it's just not procedurally satisfying your language for the final approval. I understand.
And I have one question about parking. There's a note in our memo from the, the town that says there is no shared parking. But as I understand your parking calculations, in fact, you are counting on some shared parking. Is that not correct?
Correct. The shared parking is.
You're like three spaces short?
On, on lot two, on, on lot one, fifty spaces are required. And we're providing fifty-one overall spaces.
Right.
For lot one. For lot two, two, you know, the, the two dwelling units requires four spaces. So there's one space on lot two. And the, there are fourteen spaces shown on lot two that are shared by both lots.
So there is shared parking?
It is, right.
Okay. Because the, our, our, our planning board memorandum said there is not shared parking, and my understanding is that there is. It probably works, but I just think we need to be clear that we are counting on some shared parking.
Does someone need to move in this space to allow someone else to use it, John, or is it shared only in a sense that it crosses the line and it's meeting you?
You guys can work it out.
Yeah, is that, yeah.
Yeah.
We just need to clarify that.
Okay.
Is that it? Elaine, on your.
Sorry, are you talking to me?
Oh, I'm talking, you all set?
I'm all set.
Henry, Caroline, you good?
Yep.
Okay. So I think we'll, your, excuse, pardon me, that you have a list of what you'll be working on for the May meeting. And if I'm remembering things correctly, on landscaping, you'll revise the plans to build in option one. Anything else? If you would just give a second look at the screening on Hillway to see if anything else is, in light of the comments, would be useful.
Remove the fence.
You have notes in Victoria's, several questions on the lighting plan. Is that light, light and sign? And Joe's question about the roof line of the, of the main building?
As far as the building goes, there's a lot to discuss about the building. I mean, they, they're still in their design phase. There's the question of what kind of siding they're going to be using. So they're, the building probably will be the key topic of discussion.
Right.
At the next meeting.
Is there anything that you've seen so far, though, that you want to require being addressed?
No, I just, I, I don't, I think Joe hit on it. The building design is not complete, so we haven't really seen the.
And is it atypical that for site plan review, the building design is usually not complete? Most folks wouldn't go all the way through a building design unless they knew they had secured the right to build the building and spend that. So at what point, I guess what level of detail? It seems like we're almost there, so we need to provide a little more detail on the elevation specific to the town center standard that talks about the appeal of the building.
And you've, you've, the only thing I would be a little concerned about is, you've talked about reserving the right to use either wood shingles or a composite. And I know you've got labels on the plan. I think we just want to look at those labels and make sure it's really clear what exterior materials and that, you know, you, you say that it's either A or B, and there's a key that's A or B.
Sure.
But I don't, I mean, I think those are the things we're talking about.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
And there were no questions? I mean, we, we had a fairly extensive table that went around the building perimeter to calculate building height and volume. I mean, those are the things that, if, if there's a dispute on that, which, again, we went to great lengths to make sure that it was pretty airtight, the, the analysis of that, that would really change things for us. The, what you're talking about are things that are supplemental to provide with more info, not to change the overall.
Yes, Maureen.
In anticipation of a tabling motion that you'll be making, I just wanted to point out that the submission deadline for the May meeting is this Friday. You may not be able to make that because the April meeting's been slid forward a whole week, and that I would suggest that we let the applicant have an extra day or two, and that I will work directly with them to make sure that happens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely. Okay. I guess I would then ask for a motion to table to the May meeting. Do we have the tricks for that?
I'll make it.
You should.
The tricks away?
Page, uh, keep going. There's a motion for approval on page ten that could, excuse me, on page eleven, there, at the top of page eleven, there's a motion for approval that could very easily be converted into a motion to table to the May seventeenth meeting.
Do you want me to do that?
Joe's got it under control.
Joe, would you like to?
Yeah. Do I need to read that be it ordered and all that?
Yep.
I think it just be table.
Just, just the motion at the very top.
Be it ordered that, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Two Penguin Properties LLC for minor subdivision review of a three lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing six thousand two hundred five square feet of medical office space, ten multifamily residential units, and a three hundred fifty seven square foot building connector located at twelve Hillway be tabled until the meeting at?
May seventeenth.
May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Okay, the motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I will leave the USB drive in your machine, so I don't disconnect it improperly.
Okay, we, if the folks who are going to leave could do so quickly and quietly, we do have another application to. Consider.
Let's see, it's right here.
Fun to get. Sure, I'm going to be leaving you. I'm leaving. I'm going to.
This one's like password protected. That's right.
Okay, for the board, a, we have a rule that says we have to approve extending beyond 10 o'clock. And since the folks from Verizon have been sitting here patiently, do I have a motion to amend the rules to extend past 10 o'clock?
I'll make it.
Okay, second, Jonathan, all in favor? Ask unanimously. Okay, thank the folks from Verizon for your patience. It's been a long night, I realize. Okay, the next agenda item is, excuse me, Verizon Wireless is requesting site plan review to install wireless antennas on the existing water tower located at 11 Avon Road and construct a 10-by-16-foot concrete pad at the base of the tower to support equipment cabinets and a generator. The application will be reviewed for compliance in section 19-9, site plan regulations. The procedure in this hearing will be as follows. We'll ask the applicant to summarize changes to last month's project submission. We will then have a allotted period for public comment. The planning board rules permit the board to limit public comment at this point to a total of 15 minutes with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. And we will, we will use that guideline, so we'll have 15 minutes for public comment. All those who wish to speak who can be accommodated will be accommodated, but it's a zero-sum game, so if you use your entire three minutes but could really say it in two, you've taken a minute from somebody else, so I would ask you to be concise. At the close of the public comment, we'll begin discussion, and at the end of the discussion, we have the option to approve, approve the conditions, table or deny the application. We'd like to hear from the applicant about changes since last month.
Super great. Thanks, everyone. Scott Anderson and Chip Fredette here for Verizon Wireless. Let me just get right to some of the changes we had submitted on April 1st. Kind of a cover letter, walking through them, and I can kind of walk folks through on the big screen here of some of the changes that we have added. I'm going to take them kind of in order of as they show up in the site plan. We had had a discussion at the last meeting about kind of both a buffering and an access management issue to the site. As I think everybody knows, this kind of area is surrounded by an existing chain-link fence, and currently, there's a somewhat undefined parking area that comes all through here. There was a kind of request to try to narrow up the entrance of the driveway to 24 feet, which we had done, but also still to provide enough room for kind of backing in and, you know, vehicle circulation inside. Again, the site for our part will be visited about once a month by a Verizon Wireless technician. So the one change that we had done was to tighten this up to 24 feet and to provide some grass and vegetation in that area, and then also to provide some additional vegetation in this area, given that we've got significant vegetation around the kind of three sides of the site, but not as much here in the front. So we had proposed to put some over here, we kind of moved things over, somewhat consistent with, I think it was Joe's kind of schematic that he had done and tried to kind of pick up on that and provide some additional buffering here. We understand that Maureen has kind of taken a crack at this. We reviewed her memo and some of her thoughts. You know, we had proposed a split rail fence here. If a kind of a mulch area would be preferable, we're fine with that. I took a quick look, well, not a quick look because we had some time, I took an extensive look at her kind of modification, which we're comfortable with. I'm getting the sense from her, two things. One, some interest in putting some buffering over here and a slight realignment of where we've proposed to put the trees, maybe fewer over here and more in this immediate area, which works for us and we're willing to work with the board on that. And also, some concerns that Maureen had in checking with others about the types of trees that we're proposing, preference for kind of local hemlock as opposed to the eastern red cedar and some of the fruit trees that we had suggested. Those are also changes that we're completely comfortable with, taking some direction from the board. The two other, and these will be extraordinarily difficult for you to see, but in the hard copies that you've had, we've made changes to two of the notes on the plan, one dealing with co-location and one dealing with lead remediation. With regard to co-location, there was a concern by, I think it was Elaine and maybe some of the other board members, to make it clear that not only are we going to comply with the FCC's rules and requirements regarding co-location, which is kind of part of our FCC license, but specifically that we will, of course, be complying with the town's co-location provision in your ordinance. So we modified note six on C1 to make it clear that we are subject both to our FCC obligations and the town's obligations for co-location. We also added a kind of a sentence there. Obviously, anybody that comes on the site after us has to reach an agreement with the Portland Water District, and we just wanted to clarify that as well. The second note change we made had to do with the lead remediation. That's note seven on sheet C1. And there's really two things that we did with that. First, we wanted to expressly reference the January 7th, 2015 letter from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection that kind of laid out what the obligation was for the water district's lead remediation work, which includes both what they've done now and then follow-up after the tank has been painted. I think we've talked about kind of how this will go. The tank will be repainted by the water district. We pay a percentage of that, and then after the painting is done, then the DEP requires the PWD to make sure that there hasn't been any additional lead contamination of the soil as a result of the prepping of the tank in the painting. And Verizon Wireless will not come onto the site to do any work until the painting is done and the DEP is signed off, so we made sure we expressly referenced that January 7th letter. And we also made it clear that we are, what would obviously comply with any requirements imposed on us directly by the DEP as part of our site mobilization and installation of our equipment. So trying to make sure that no matter what the DEP says to whoever they say it to, that we will be subject to those rules and will follow whatever instructions they've given to the water district and if necessary to us. The next change is, I think, best seen on C2. So the original proposal had three sides of wood stockade fencing that we were proposing, and we were proposing to piggyback on the existing chain-link fence of the water district. There was a kind of question and a request by some of the planning board to kind of further attenuate the sound as much as possible. So what we've done is we've added a fourth section of fencing there, so there will be wood stockade fencing that will surround the equipment enclosure completely. And then we have proposed to put the sound attenuating fabric, which goes on the inside of the fence, which will further reduce the sound even at the closest property line, which is right here. So based on our kind of discussions with our sound guy, after we explained to him the changes that we were proposing here, even if the board were to decide that the emergency generator running in emergency mode, which means it could, excuse me, it could be happening during evening hours, we will be below 45 dBA at the property line, even with the emergency generator running in the middle of the night. We still think that the way your ordinance is structured, that if the town of Cape Elizabeth loses power, you know, I'm not sure what percentage of homes have backup generators, but we expect those all come on. We do have a battery backup. One of those boxes is the battery backup. It's good for six to eight hours, so it's not until six to eight hours have gone that our emergency generator would even come on. But with the additional fence and the sound attenuation, it sort of takes the legal question of whether the emergency generator is subject to your sound standard somewhat off the table. Also, kind of not shown on the plan, we were asked to provide specific amounts for the town to calculate a performance guarantee, and there were two items that we submitted estimates for. One was for the planting and improvements, and the second was for removal of the antennas and the equipment area in the event that the site was abandoned. We would expect that a condition of any approval would require us to essentially take everything down and disassemble it following some period of non-use, and then the performance guarantee is there in the event that we don't show up and do it so that you can do it. So we provided estimates from our engineers, both on the cost of the planting and the cost of removal. In the event that we are doing a modification to the planting plan per Maureen's kind of mock-up, we would propose to make sure that the amount that we've given for the planting costs would be adjusted. It may not need to be, but we would propose that, you know, that be kind of redone before a building permission and before anything constructed, to make sure that any change in the planting plan would still be covered by the performance guarantee. Finally, we did, and I'm sorry, I don't have plots for these, for the big screen, but a question had come up from some members of the public about what the coverage change would be expected from the site. So I believe it's the last tab of the submittal on April 1st. We asked RF engineers to do a kind of before and after, which shows the kind of what we would consider to be inadequate coverage at this point in time in this kind of corner of Cape Elizabeth, and what the expected footprint would be of the antennas at this elevation, were they installed and turned on, to kind of address those coverage improvements that we're searching with here. And I think we talked about how, whether or not that was part of the planning board process. It was a question that many people had asked, so we wanted to make sure that you had that information. And then the only other one thing that I would talk about kind of briefly, just because there's been a lot of kind of comment on it, we have this issue of concealment, which I think the board did talk about as kind of their threshold issue last week. You certainly have got plenty of legal views. I think there's actually a pretty straightforward way in which your ordinance flows. We have a situation where installation of antennas on alternative tower structures need to be concealed, and that's reflected in the kind of list of land uses for each one of the zoning districts. You also have the provision, which is kind of the permitting flow chart, which is, under what circumstances could the code officer issue a permit and what circumstances does a planning board need to do the review? I think the way you read all of these together, and I appreciate why, looking at them initially, it can cause some confusion, but the zoning talks about concealment but doesn't talk about complete or incomplete concealment. The permitting kind of plan talks about, I think, permanent, you know, complete and incomplete. So in the event, we keep using the example of a church steeple, if you were able to do an installation where the antennas were completely hidden and you wouldn't even be able to see them, well, I think that fits the CEO permit. That's complete concealment, and then Ben can issue a permit for that, and that project wouldn't necessarily come before the board. In the event that concealment is not complete, that's when it comes to the planning board for site plan review. And I think that reflects the idea the folks have put the ordinance together that, look, if you can't see anything, it's okay, you can do a building permit and the CEO can handle that. But if there are things that are visible in any way on the outside, then it comes to you for site plan review. So I think that was a discussion that we had had, and the board had kind of gotten into that as a threshold issue last time. We can certainly answer, you know, any questions that you might have about that. But I just wanted to run through kind of briefly. It had come up a couple of times about, can you show us some other water tank installations? And we had talked about some of the abutters. And so what I put up here is just some, these are our kind of standard water tank installations. None of these are concealed in any way, and you can see, you know, here you've got multiple carriers, you've got one here, you've got one here and one here. This one, I think, is in Kittery.
No, it's Freeport.
Freeport, sorry.
No, very, very high-end, high-end.
And so this is New Market, New Hampshire. Again, the antennas are kind of there. They're colored to paint to match the tank, but they're, none of them are concealed. Salem, New Hampshire, with three different carriers on right there. And just for time, I'm kind of zipping through these. This is up in Bangor, obviously, next to the airport, which is why it looks like the Purian, a dog chow person. But same idea, we've got different levels for different carriers, but not really any sense of concealment. Sometimes they get painted, just kind of scrolling down. This is kind of the normal industry installation for antennas. And I'm not, I probably won't even pull it up, but just because I know you've seen the photo simulations that we've provided for here, that show what we've attempted to do with the, now that I've said that, I'm going to bring it up just so that everybody can see what we propose. So both the kind of before and after, this one's showing the after, we're proposing the shrouds for the antennas. I know there was some discussion both at the site walk and subsequently by some of the abutters about the possibility of running the shrouds, the entirety around the water tank. This may get into kind of a subjective area. Our goal has always been to do the best that we can to conceal the presence of the antennas such that if a year from now, if this site were to be built, someone who had no idea what we had been doing here all this time came and looked up at this tank, they would see a water tank with some things attached but wouldn't necessarily see it as a cell phone facility, which is, we think, what the kind of purposes of the concealment, to cover the antennas. Most people know what cell phone antennas are, so that's been our goal, is to do that as required by the zoning ordinance. I think what we've indicated before is we think that this is the best option because it conceals the antennas, we think completely for purposes of the antennas, but doesn't add any unnecessary mass to the top of the tank. Running the shroud, the entirety around, would require a lot of additional material that would just be covering the existing railing system. And as a result, we think that this is actually the best, most visually minimally intrusive way to kind of shield what this is and conceal the antennas, but also kind of minimize visual impacts as much as possible. I think the only other picture I'll leave you with was one that Mr. Armstrong had sent, which I thought, let's see if this works. We didn't actually have one of these. Mr. Armstrong had done kind of a rendering of what would the painted tank look like if our antennas were not on it. This is, I think, is actually helpful because our simulation showed the rusted tank, so there was a lot of change. But I think what we're hoping the board sees from these two and what the abutters kind of appreciate is, based on kind of what's there now when it gets repainted, that the addition that we have to the top is actually quite minimal, which really reflects what our approach has been since the beginning with this project, which is to try to design something that will address a significant coverage gap to improve cell phone service in Cape Elizabeth, but to do it using a structure that's already here and to do it in the most visually minimally intrusive way possible. So working with you folks on the planting plan, eliminating the equipment shelter, going with the smaller cabinets, moving that to the back of the tank, these are things that we've tried to do to make this a kind of a positive site that provides significant benefits while still minimizing the impacts to abutters and the like. So that's probably all our kind of new, what's new and in response, and we're here for questions or comments, whatever.
Quick question. The hemlocks, the six-to-seven-foot hemlocks, how tall would they ultimately get? Can you go back to that picture?
Yes.
Good question. I've seen hemlocks get into the high teens.
So that is a...
So that'd be about two and a half times the fence height.
Yeah, so maybe here.
I'll look it up.
Peter, well, I don't know if we've ever asked this, but is the top of the tower also going to be painted the same color?
Yes.
What was the question? The dome, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess we haven't seen.
Okay, to keep this moving along, I'd like to turn to the 15-minute public comment period. Once again, if you folks wouldn't mind lining up the...
They're already lined up. I've looked, I've looked up your answer to your question. Arbor Day, Canadian hemlock grows to a height of 40 to 70 feet and a spread of 20 to 35 feet at maturity.
Awesome.
The, okay, Maureen will be running the three-minute timer and...
Give me a second.
Yep. As soon as she...
Okay, good.
Okay, yes, sir, if you identify yourself and have it.
Thank you, members of the board. Chairman Curry, as you know, my name is Pavel Darling. I live at 9 Avon Road, directly abutting 11 Avon Road in the water tank. I know it's late, but the first thing I want to do is thank you all for your time. As it relates to the Verizon proposal, we've come a ways since we first started this, and I really do appreciate all of the effort that you have done. I know that you all want to get home, as I, as do I, so I'll try and keep it brief. My comments are more to introduce topics that my neighbors below, behind me, will be bringing forward. But really, I think there are three requirements that have still yet to be meet, to be met by Verizon. The first is a very simple one. There's a fence. It is not currently eight feet tall. We have not heard or seen anything in the application yet that indicates that that's going to be dealt with in any way. I know we've discussed it, but it's still not there. Second, the current buffering plan does not extend throughout the property. I know Attorney Anderson has said that there's vegetation around it, as you'll hear from our neighbors and see from some pictures. We would disagree with that statement and do think that buffering should extend all around the property, in particular for the abutting properties. And lastly, the issue of concealment. We don't feel that the current application proposal does meet the concealment standard that is before you. I'll note that you've received written comments from our attorneys at Brandon Isaacson. Our attorney Nat is here. If you have any questions as it relates to the legal issues, I am not an attorney. I'll leave that to the lawyers to handle, but I do believe concealment is a standard that you need to meet, and we don't believe that it currently has been met. Lastly, I'll just note that I did submit some written comments. I think they're fairly straightforward, so in the interest of time, I'll just let you refer to those written comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Todd Forsyth. I live at 13 Trundy Road. I am going to try to bring this up if I can. This works much better if I have some photos. So I have two specific concerns, and I'm going to speak with this evening, and both were raised by Pavel a minute ago there. Concern one is the visual buffering on the non-Avon roadside, the backside, where there are three, four abutters to the piece of property. The proposed site does not meet the town ordinance requirements, specifically the zoning ordinance. Unless existing vegetation provides a buffer strip, a vegetated buffer shall be provided along property lines, along roadways, or visible to existing abutted or nearby buildings within a quarter mile. To be landscaped as follows, blah, blah, blah. So I want to show you, in the memos that Verizon has, continues to show, and the maps that they show, actually, earlier you saw this visual, which from the appearance would appear that there's a lush green forest surrounding the property behind, when in fact, what the property really does look like, if you look at from my home and my neighbor's home, so this is, this is a visual from my neighbor's house. You can see that this is six to seven months of the year where there is no growth or very little vegetation. There is a canopy, obviously, in the summertime, but there is no undergrowth. So the visual that we have is at eye level, and from my home would be very similar. This is from my backyard, so this is my property looking across, so there is no vegetation. So there is not a vegetation buffer, right? So you can, so Verizon is required to comply with the buffering requirements clearly outlined in the tower, in the town ordinance. And while they may, and actually, it's interesting because we've now heard that hemlock is a possibility, is vegetation, and hemlock is actually shade tolerant, grows to 10, 15 feet, is, grows very quickly, and is actually used in Maine as a visual barrier for these types of issues. So something, the second concern that I have is actually the height of the fence. So as Pavel raised earlier, the fence, and I'll just throw a couple of these, this is an actual, you can see here, the fence is under seven feet. All the way around the, at the tower, there's no place that it actually hits seven feet. The height of this board is actually, or the piece of wood that I'm using is cut to eight feet. So this has been raised a number of times, and nowhere has Verizon addressed it. So proposed solution, it is the request of those individuals whose homes abut the proposed site, that the existing fence be replaced by an eight-foot fence that includes a green, that includes green privacy slats on the rear three sides of the site. It is agreed among the group that an eight-foot fence with privacy slats, along with a buffer of hemlock trees surrounding the three non-Avon road sides of the site, would meet requirements.
You've run out of time. Thank you.
Brad Kaufman, 1 Avon Road. This is a picture of a water tank in Motagua, Texas, that actually conceals the presence of cellular antennas as our ordinance requires. This concealment band is what provides the stealth characteristics of this tower. In this inset picture, you can actually see with some of the panels removed where the cellular antennas are. This design was done by a company, Stealth Concealment Solutions. I asked them to provide suggestions for the Avon Road Tower. This is the first option that they provided on the right, where the concealment band would go around the perimeter of the catwalk. There you can see where it would be located. The second option that they provided would actually tuck the concealment band under the catwalk, as you see there. The point of these examples is to show you, I, Mr. Anderson showed you a parade of horribles. I want to show you what concealing the presence actually looks like. And these examples, I think, demonstrate the difference between concealing the presence of antennas and merely screening them. The ordinance allows screening of things like dumpsters and storage sheds, but not commercial antennas on alternative tower structures. Verizon can, as you can see from these examples, Verizon can, and it must conceal the presence of its proposed antennas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Priscilla Armstrong, 18 Avon Road. The water tower site has, in the past, been twice considered a possibility for a tower overlay district and twice rejected. Although the neighbors on Trendy and Avon Road thought this question had been put to rest in 2014, 2004, sorry, we also took comfort in the wording of the town zoning ordinance language for alternative tower sites because the language specifically required that the presence of any antenna are required to be concealed, not camouflaged. In fact, those two words were debated back and forth when the ordinances were being drawn up, and concealed won out. I was going to talk about the buffering because what was on the plan would not work. Hemlock wood, my woods are full of it, if you went that way, I'm sure, and Maureen is right, they grow to 25 to 35 feet at maturity, no, a spread of, and so they would work anyhow. But my real point is that while I feel that Verizon has made some changes to their original proposal, and that some of the changes have resulted in a better plan, these changes, really, I feel, have resulted because of extreme involvement and research for better ways to do this by the neighbors, and not because Verizon really wanted to provide the building that would have the least negative impact on the neighborhood. I regret that Verizon chose to sue the town when the zoning board of appeals turned down their application instead of working with the town, but regardless of how this came out as a result of the lawsuit, Verizon did have to go through site approval and review the planning board, and it does have to meet the town ordinances regarding concealment and buffering. Please consider carefully and ask yourself if Verizon has fully met them. If you don't feel that they have, please don't issue a permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Tim Carter, 28 Broad Cove Road, Cape Elizabeth. You've heard a number of reasonable requests, I think. I have two stories for you, one hypothetical and one actual. The first hypothetical is that I, we moved here not long ago. I have a dog. I'm elderly. I use the Greenbelt trails in the Broad Cove area. If I fall, I break my ankle or something worse. I cannot call 911. I will lie there until somebody happens to hear me call for help. Actual number two, about a week ago, my wife and I were awakened in the early hours of the morning by our carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide alarm, okay? It did wake us up. I went to turn the light. The lights were out. We had no power. I threw open the windows, grabbed a coat, ran outside in my sock feet, wondering how I was going to call 911 because we have no service. I had invested, I knew this, I had invested in a power, in a signal amplifier for my home, and it covers my home and yard, and so I can use the cell phone. When the power's out, that's out. And so, it turned out that the carbon monoxide issue was resolved because I drove in my stocking feet over to find the fire chief who was over at the accident, and he called his people, and they came over and they helped us with it, right? If, instead of being a carbon monoxide problem, it had been a heart attack or a stroke, I would not, I would be dead now without the cell phone service. So, while we're dealing with all of these niceties, which are important in terms of aesthetics, there's a possibility that someone will lose their life because there's no cell phone service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this will be the last speaker.
Good evening. Tony Armstrong, 32 Loston Road. I first want to just briefly address a sort of a side issue. I got a sense at the last meeting that there was some concern that if a cell phone company doesn't come in here and help the water district pay to paint this tank, that you're going to be looking at this ugly rust bucket, as was properly said last week, forever. And I just want to make it clear that the record's very clear that the water district had plans to take this tank down. They told us this in 2013. I've done a FOIA request. There's documentation in the water district files showing that they've got studies to this effect. They've explained timelines to other people about what they were going to do. So, bottom, and given the fact that you've got this major contamination issue with the DEP looking over their shoulder, I can assure you, it's very unlikely that if the cell phone companies are not allowed to come into this situation, it's very unlikely that tank will continue to sit there the way it is. Either it's coming down, or it's going to get, as Mr. Anderson properly showed you, it's going to be painted and look like that. So, that, I want to deal with that issue. The other issue I want to focus on is concealment. You know, as an attorney, I understand, and I'm going to hopefully simplify this, the analysis of legislation, when there's not a clear understanding where things are at, usually starts out with plain meaning of the language. Everybody has spoken to the plain meaning here. Everybody's agreed that this, the proposal has failed to conceal the presence of an antenna. Mr. Anderson basically said that the last meeting. So, then you start to look, as I have, at the legislative history of this endeavor. We had the Telecommunications Committee Task Force in the late 90s, followed up by the planning board, followed up by the council, and if you look at the email I sent you this week, and I hope you do, you'll see that in each event, something was done to make this language that ultimately ended up in the ordinance very specific that concealment and conceal was to be used over the term camouflage. Secondly, that in situations where camouflage was being used, the effort would be to put the antennas in or within the tower, including the alternative tower structure. And there's a letter from the town attorney to the planning staff saying that the language should be tightened up, and in the end, when it got to the council for the final decision, the language was amended by, a proposal by Councilor Swift Caata, in which she wanted the language tightened up, so it was pretty clear that the two primary places to put antennas in this town would be at the locations of the tower overlay zones, the other two places. And I'll segue into the final point here, which is that not once, but twice, and maybe even a third time, the tower overlay zone was rejected on the Avon Road site because it is such a tight site and so close to residences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Okay, with that, we will close the public comment period, and the word is, we can now discuss the merits of the application. I guess it probably makes sense to identify what no longer is an issue and what's still an issue, and...
I have an issue, and I'm in support of many of the comments. We talked a lot about the height of the fence in the last two meetings, and I'm just, was perplexed by I wasn't seeing a replacement of the fence on the plan.
Well, I think our post-final, we have a requirement for the fence...
I do. I, I'm curious why it didn't show up on the plan.
Yeah, and I, and I thought that we had made it clear at the last meeting that we would agree in any location that the fence, because some of it's closer than others, maybe to eight feet, but that we would agree to make sure that that fence was eight feet at all locations. We didn't put a change to the plan to that effect. I thought that was going to be a condition of approval, and we're still totally fine with making sure that that is eight feet at every location. I don't think we need to replace the entire fence, but just to make sure that, to the extent it is sagging or bent or out of whack, that it is repaired and is eight feet at every point around the perimeter of the, of the tower.
Okay.
Caroline, is that satisfied?
Yeah, I think they might have a hard time doing that because of the height of the fence, making it eight feet all the way around. Okay.
When, where, they would have to...
It will be eight feet all the way around in the end. Okay, that's all.
The earlier discussions we had had regarding noise, I heard no comments.
I think they've addressed...
I think they have, yeah. I think the noise is off the table, unless anybody disagrees. Okay. Why don't we talk about concealment?
Concealment.
Any, any observations by other board members on the point? Henry?
I looked at the photograph that was on the screen with the shroud going all the way around, and whilst I hear what Verizon have to say about minimalizing it, I must admit that the photograph with the shroud going all the way around certainly looked, in my estimation, a lot better than three things around the place wherever they are. So, from my vote, I would rather see a shroud going all the way around.
Caroline?
I know you're going to find this shocking. I agree with Henry.
Wow, gee, that's the first time, right?
Let me, let me take the other side of that. I suppose you could say that the shroud going all the way around is a little more attractive.
It looks like it's part of the, part of the design.
Frigging, but on the specific issue of concealment, all the shroud going all the way around is doing, is concealing other areas where there is not an antenna. I'm not sure I find one more attractive than the other, but I think in each case, the shroud is concealing the antenna structure. And in each case, when you look at this thing, whether it's three separate boxes or a thing, a collar going all the way around, but you see the wires going up, you know the antennas there, you just don't, you don't happen to know where they are.
I don't know whether you'd actually know there are antennas there unless you'd been to one of these meetings and seen what the shrouds are.
Well, you normally don't have shrouds around a tower, I don't, anyway. That's my own, my own feeling that there are two different ways to do it. I find the, the selection they've made of a shroud on the antenna itself covering it completely to satisfy the requirement, acknowledging fully there are other ways to do it, and you may find the other way more attractive. Views down here.
My view with regards to that is that the smaller does satisfy, and this is just my opinion, the concealment aspect. I think of it as, if you add a larger structure to something, there's a larger structure up there, and that's what a shroud that would go 360 degrees around the water tower would show. I feel that if you, if, when you're driving on Wells Road and you look at the horizon, you can see the water tower. I think if it had a 360-degree shroud around it, it would be, stick out much more than it would if it had just the small three shrouds on it. So, my opinion is that the shroud would add a little too much, that all of a sudden, the whole aspect of concealing these three antennas would make the entire thing stand out a little bit more, and therefore, we lost the whole aspect of concealment.
So, we have two votes in each direction. Joe, Elaine?
Yeah, if it were in my backyard, I would actually prefer the discontinuous, just the three little pieces. I mean, I, I'm an architect. I like industrial-looking things. The continuous shroud just seems gratuitous and kind of, I don't know, odd to me, whereas I like being able to see the railing on the, at the top there, so.
Elaine, how do you feel?
I think the three separate shrouds, as they're shown, meet the requirements of the ordinance for concealment.
Okay, so as we go forward, I think we're looking at four votes that the existing shrouds are okay and two not?
I guess so.
Okay. We got the eight feet, we got the shrouds. Buffering, there's a number of the commenters believe that the plantings to achieve buffering should be not only where they are on Avon Road, but down the sides and the back facing Trendy. Do we have any observations on that one?
This is on the buffering?
Pardon me?
This is the buffering?
Yeah.
When, are we talking about the actual front portion of it or the buffering around the back?
Everything else.
Well, photos we saw, you didn't seem to be able to see the top, so I'm not sure what it's, the additional buffering would be changing. I mean, the view of that is going to remain as it is. Well, your photo, she didn't show the top. Your photo's just this part, and that's there. There's no reason to buffer it.
Okay, this has to be a conversation by the board. I'm sorry, sir, we can't, can't invite you to talk further.
I have one question about the buffering. It isn't Verizon's site, so I assume that the W, the water department or the water owners of the property wouldn't mind you doing all these changes to the site. I mean, it's all very well to put trees in there, but as you don't own the site, I assume somehow you have permission to actually do this.
Well, there's some provisions in the lease that allow, that kind of require the Portland Water District to allow for kind of reasonable conditions imposed by the board, so the planting that we've proposed in the front, I don't think there's any question that that will be fine with them and that they'll see that as kind of part of the process of working with the town. I mean, I think our concern with going around the entirety of the site is not only, we want to keep the fence in roughly the place it's in right now, which topographically on the back, you may have remembered from the sidewalk, is kind of right on the edge of where the slope starts to go. So, there's the issue about, are we putting hemlock trees that are 15 feet to block the bottom of the tank? We're, we're totally working with, I think, the town to do the buffering in front where the road is, but I keep going back to, you know, the tank is there. We're trying to minimize kind of the visual impacts at the base, but we won't be able to do anything to prevent the people on Trendy Road from seeing the tank. It's just simply too big. So, we've been focusing on kind of the view from the road where our equipment, our installation is, and we think that makes sense, and we've got logistical and then issues about, you know, whether or not it is necessary to do new plantings. You know, there is quite a bit of vegetation in the back, which we think complies with the ordinance, so.
Yeah, my own observation is that the folks down in Trendy, and I appreciate your not caring to have this monstrosity in your backyard, pardon me, but you're about, if I read the top of map correctly, you're about 15 feet or more below the grade of where the water tank tower sits, so you are looking up the slope if you want, if, to see the tower, looking straight ahead, you're looking sort of hillside, and to put plantings back there, you'd have to cut down existing trees, which is something we don't like to do, trees which are shielding your view for, you know, a significant part of the year. And there's still no way you're going to obscure, if you put in some kind of hemlocks there, you're still going to see the top two-thirds of the tower. There's really no way you can, you can shield that tower from your view. So, I, my own reaction was, as much as you may not care for that thing, the existing forestation that is there is adequate buffering into, to change it and put in evergreens back there, you would have to eliminate a lot of the existing trees, which is, seems counterproductive. Jonathan?
Yeah, I mean, from the sidewalk, which I'm grateful that a lot of the people in the neighborhood came out for, we had a hard time getting around the perimeter of that barbed wire fence because it was some thick brush that was back there. And from what I saw also, I think Mr. Anderson was correct, that there was sort of slope down, which would make it harder to bring in buffering, and as Peter just pointed out, I think you'd probably take away more buffering just to put buffering in. I know that doesn't make sense, but there's already something natural in there that I think it would be counterproductive to actually go back there with machinery, put in, put in new trees to create some sort of buffering. And also, from what I saw too, is that there was quite a bit of distance between the property lines and that barbed wire fence that, I don't know, I think almost adding buffering would be unnecessary because there is such a distance. And there was one particular picture that I saw, not from this meeting, but another meeting, that it was from someone's backyard, but it almost had looked like somebody had cut down trees in their own yard, which I found, kind of thought was a little bit, well, if you want to keep, I mean, everyone has a right to do what they want on their own property, but if you already have buffering on your property, it doesn't really make sense to cut down trees and then complain that you can see the neighbor a little bit too much, but that was just one thing that I observed from that. So, that's my opinion on it.
We have some comments down here? Elaine?
I think the buffering, I like the, Maureen's new proposal here along the road, but I think the perimeter buffering otherwise is adequate in the existing forest.
Are we gonna talk about the front?
Okay, so we, I think we have-
Yeah, I agree.
Something of consensus that the buffering in the front will be according to the new-
Can I talk about that?
Sure.
So what happened here is a member of the planning board asked me to do something, because if you were not happy with what the applicant had brought forward for landscaping plan, your only option was to table this application. So this was an effort to illustrate, badly of course, an alternative plan, so that if you were of a mind to move towards approval, you would have an alternative that you could refer to and a proposed condition of approval that goes with it. So the applicant has seen this. I think they said they were okay with it. It's slightly, the cherry trees have been removed. I spoke with the landscape architect. He said they would never survive in that location. He suggested hemlocks rather than the eastern red cedar, and that's why you have that proposal before you.
Okay, so I think we've dealt with the fence, we've dealt with the buffering, we've dealt with conceal-
Peter, I can say one thing on that issue. I did notice that in the new proposal, with the differences, the changes that you made to the front portion of it, it seemed that if you're at the driveway, and you're facing the gate, that you added more trees to the left, but then took away trees that you were going to put in on the right of that drive. I don't know.
Well, the intent here was not just buffering, but access management. Because what's happened over the years is, you know, landscapers will go in there and mow, and they mow, and they mow, and so you have this big, open, undefined gravel area. And my thought was that if you used evergreens to close in the size of the driveway and keep it closed in, and you needed to do that on both sides.
Right. I like that idea a lot, Maureen, but I'm just pointing to this, where on the right side of the driveway-
Right.
There are no, I would suggest that there actually be trees planted on that side.
Right, and-
Right, no, and I saw that, but I just want to make sure that the applicant's aware.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, okay.
I think originally we were-
I guess I missed that part.
We were thinking-
It's been late.
Yeah.
You got your free-
Yeah, so we're good with Maureen.
And this also eliminates the split rail fencing.
Okay, so I think, if my notes are correct, we've discussed what appeared to be items of return to the public. Does anybody have anything else about this application they would like to discuss? Okay, well, I mean-
One thing that I want to point out to the public too, if you didn't get a chance to look at the coverage map, I don't think it was put up there, but I thought that was an important aspect that Verizon provided. This is the coverage right now with the non-green area being what's not covered. And this is what happens if, with the coverage. And to myself, that's a huge concern, and I think that that's what is most important. I understand the angst that people on Avon Road would have, and I respect that. But at the same time, there's a whole nother swath of capability that's not covered that will be covered, and I think that's a very important aspect of what the application is all about.
Okay, the, if we are going to go ahead and have a motion and vote on this plan, it's going to be a little bit more laborious this time than normally. Yes.
If we're gonna go through the motion here, as we have it proposed, I had a couple of questions on the specific findings.
We're gonna go item by item.
Okay.
So if you'd like to raise them, we're gonna vote on each item.
Each numbered item?
Several.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so when the moment comes, please speak up. The, I think the way to keep everybody from losing their voice is why don't we just rotate around, I'll take a pass with Jonathan's vote, Elaine and Caroline, starting with finding number one, and we'll have a motion, second, and vote on each numbered item. Okay? So Jonathan, would you like to start with the finding and fact number one?
Okay, just, just so it's clear. So you want me to read number one, and then I tap out and it goes to the next person, or just read until I'm forced?
Read number one.
Read number one.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion for the board to consider, the planning board typically attaches conditions to, you need all that?
Page six, number one at the bottom.
Finding the fact, Verizon Wireless is proposing to install wireless antennas on the existing water tower located at 11 Avon Road, and to construct a 10-foot by 16-foot concrete pad at the base of the tower to support equipment cabinets and a generator, which requires review under Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations and Section 19-8-12 Tower and Antenna Performance Standards.
Motion to approve? Seconded?
So we're gonna do the, each one is a motion? We're not going to, you have to do each one?
Each one.
Each one is a motion?
Yep. Motion, second?
Sure.
In favor? Item one carries unanimously. Joe, number two?
The location of the antennas and supporting equipment are located within the developed portion of the site.
Motion? Joe, second? Jonathan, in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Henry, number three?
There is adequate capacity in the existing road system to accommodate a small amount of traffic generated by the project. Access to the site, internal vehicular circulation and parking accommodations are safe and convenient with access to management involved.
Motion by Henry, second. Elaine, in favor?
Can I post the amendment?
Oh, sure.
Specifically reference the access management improvements as reviewed by the planning board tonight, because I think that's what we're talking about, is it not?
Do you want to add, as reviewed by the-
Yes, indeed.
Planning board tonight?
Yes.
Agreed.
Landscape plan, option A dated 4/25/2016.
Thank you.
Do we need to re-vote?
We hadn't voted yet. Second?
Oh, yeah, wow.
As amended?
Second. Who seconded?
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Elaine, number, did you fill up your voice? Okay.
Short one. A system of pedestrian ways is not appropriate for the proposed use, and therefore is not provided.
Seconded? Anybody? Henry, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number five, Caroline?
Adequate provision for stormwater has been provided by minimizing the increase in impervious surface and preserving the surrounding vegetation to retain stormwater on the site.
Second. Elaine, thank you. In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number six, back to you, Jonathan.
Erosion control on the site is adequate by minimizing disturbed soils and complying with means erosion and sedimentation control law when soils are disturbed.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, Joe?
The proposed project does not require a water supply.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Henry?
The proposed project does not require sanitary waste disposal.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Number nine, Elaine?
The project has been provided with adequate electrical and telecommunications service.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Number 10, Caroline?
The project includes provisions to prevent discharge of materials harmful to human health or the environment. The owner of Portland Water District has an agreement with the main Department of Environmental Protection for remediation of lead on the site.
Second. Thank you, Joe. In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 11?
The project will not generate, sorry.
Generate.
Generate.
Solid hazardous or special waste.
Second. Thank you, Joe. In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 12?
The project is not located in the Shoreland Performance Overlay District.
Second.
Thank you, Henry. In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. 13?
The applicant has demonstrated the financial and technical capabilities to complete the project.
Second.
Thank you. In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. 14?
Okay, this is one of the ones I had a question.
Okay.
Am I correct that in fact, there is no lighting at this site? Okay, then I think we have to change the finding, and I would suggest that the finding be additional lighting is not required for adequate safety at the site.
Was there not-
But it's not providing, but it's not providing any lighting, so that's my concern about the way that it's written.
Oh, it's absolutely light-free?
Perhaps if there's an emergency at night, no?
They bring a flashlight.
Flashlight. Again, sorry, Elaine, your language is then-
Said it will be provide-
Additional lighting is not required.
Additional. Okay, additional.
Just additional lighting is not required to provide adequate safety at the project.
Second.
Okay, in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. You have that language, Maureen?
I do.
Okay. Number 15, Caroline, thanks.
Sorry? The project does comply with the noise standard. The operation of a generator at night during power outage is-
Nope, you don't need that. Don't need that.
What?
You can just stop.
I can just stop right there?
With noise standard.
After the first sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Jonathan, back to you for number 16?
No outside storage of materials is proposed.
Second.
Thank you. Favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 17?
The use of shrouds and color-coordinating cabling conceals the antennas. It is necessary to paint the water tower in order for color-coordinated equipment to be concealed.
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Henry, number 18, please?
Sorry.
Eighteen.
Mine, sorry. The applicant has demonstrated by adding note 5 to Plan C1 that it will obstruct co-location by other providers, will not.
Will not, yeah.
Will not obstruct.
Uh, note-
I think you are correct.
No, it says note 5.
Yeah, but-
But I think it's actually note 6.
It's actually note 6.
So let's reread it. The applicant has not, has demonstrated by adding note 5 to Plan that it will not obstruct co-location by other providers.
Note 6, Henry.
Note 6, that it will not obstruct co-location by other providers. Not, but not on that.
Okay. Seconded? Favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 19, Elaine?
The proposed antennas will blend into the surrounding environment through the use of color and concealing architectural treatment.
Thank you.
Second.
Isn't the word camouflage in the ordinance?
Do you really want to argue with her? Do you really want to argue?
Elaine, can I argue with you?
Sure.
The word camouflaging, I believe, is in the ordinance. There is sort of a strange anomaly in the various provisions in the ordinance where the word conceal is certainly used, but I believe camouflaging is used back in Section 19 somewhere around, isn't it? So I-
This is from the Tower and Antenna Performance Standards.
Right.
So if you had a brand-new tower, you would still apply these standards, and it would necessarily be concealed. It would be camouflaged. But if you were in the district standards, then it's concealed.
It somehow occurred to me that we have to have a finding with respect to the word camouflage.
Could we add?
Okay. Towers and antennas shall be designed to blend into the environment through the use of color and camouflage.
But you, don't you already have a conceal? Yes, number 17. You have a finding on concealing on number 17.
Yeah, yeah, no, so this one, I think we want to say camouflaging, because the 19A12 to whatever, B.
How about color and camouflaging architectural treatment that conceals the antennas?
I'd like to use the word camouflaging, because it's required-
I'm leaving it in there.
Oh, leaving it in?
Yeah, leaving in camouflaging architectural treatment, and then adding at the end, that conceals, or which, I'm not sure, the antennas.
I'd go with which.
Which conceals the antennas. Thank you.
I'm fine with that. Anybody else have?
I'll second that.
Okay. In favor?
I'm not abstaining from that one.
No, you can vote against it.
I don't want to vote against it, I'm just abstaining.
Okay, here, that's your-
Okay. The existing vegetation and proposed plantings will provide a buffer and minimize visual impact? Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Number 21, no lighting is proposed.
We already said that.
Redundant.
Two different sets of standards.
Oh, two different things.
I like my motion.
Jonathan, just had a great-
I'll second your motion.
Did you rest your motion or not?
We have a second. We vote in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. 22?
The new antenna and ground-supporting pad and equipment are designed in conformance with structural standards.
Seconded? In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously.
The facility is surrounded by an existing fence, which is less than eight foot in height, but in existence prior to this application, that does not provide adequate security and should be increased to eight feet.
That's in the conditions.
That's, we've got a condition on that. Okay, second on that?
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 20-something, rather, 24?
No advertising is posed on the site.
Seconded.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. 25, Caroline?
Based on the license issued by the Federal Communications Commission, the equipment will not interfere with his existing telecommunications within the service area. Did I answer that right?
Second.
The second, in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Jonathan, back to you for 26?
The applicant has agreed to remove equipment after no more than 12 months of secession of moose.
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. 26?
The applicant shall be required to post a performance guarantee for the proposed improvements on the site.
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously.
The planning board conducted a site walk on the site located at 11 Avon Road on Saturday, February 27, 2016, beginning at 7:30 a.m.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. 28?
The application substantially complies with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations and Section 19-8-12 Tower and Antenna Performance Standards.
Second. Favor? Carries unanimously.
Okay. Keep going. Keep going. You want me to keep going? Okay.
Yeah.
Therefore be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Verizon Wireless is requesting site plan review to install wireless antennas in the existing water tower located at 11 Avon Road, and to construct a 10-by-16 concrete pad at the base of the tower to support equipment cabinets and a generator to be approved, subject to the following conditions. That the plans be revised to label the height of the existing scada?
be revised to label the height of the existing scada? Skada? Antennas as eight feet high, based on information provided by the Portland Water District; that the tower be painted and that all lead remediation be completed to the satisfaction of the DEP as described in their letter dated January seven, two thousand and fifteen to Roger Parity at the Portland Water District prior to installation of any antennas or supporting equipment or cabling; that antennas and support equipment, including but not limited to any generator, not produce any noise that cumulatively exceeds forty-five decibels between ten p.m. and seven a.m., nor fifty-five decibels between seven a.m. and ten p.m. of noise at the property line of the site; four, that the antennas and cabling be concealed; five, that the base of the tower, including any supporting equipment, structure, or cabinetry be enclosed within a minimum height-eight-foot fence with locking gate, and that supporting equipment be further concealed with a wooden stockade fence of a height of eight feet or lesser height if cabinetry is less than eight feet high.
Caroline, before you continue reading, should we add in the installation of the baffling blanket inside the fence?
If you want to, yes.
May I ask that you...
And a baffling blanket be included inside the generator enclosure. How's that?
Great.
Part of number five. Six, that a note be added to the plans that the installation shall be done in accordance with the current standards of the Electronics Industry Association Structural Standards for Steel Antenna Towers and Antenna Supporting Structures; seven, that a performance guarantee and the amount to cover proposed improvements on the site and the cost of removal of equipment after twelve months' secession of use; eight, that there be no issuance of a building permit or alteration of the site until the plans have been revised to satisfy the above conditions and submitted to the town planner.
Elaine?
Can I propose, I guess, a modification to item number four, that the antennas and cabling be concealed, because that's what we're asking, being asked to decide, and I would say at the end that the antennas and cabling be concealed in accordance with the plans presented.
I could go for that.
Yep.
Do you want me to reread it, or are we good?
I heard you proposed an amendment, and I heard Caroline accept it.
Okay.
Any other comments on the language as read on the approval provision? And a motion as read by Carol and amended by Elaine with Carol's agreement? Call for a vote?
Second.
Favor?
I haven't heard a second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. I think we're... I think we're good. We... Somewhere, we have Michael Fryland, who's going to talk to us about his application, I believe.
Is he here?
Oh. Michael, you're on.
He wanted to go home, he'd be okay with me. I'm gonna grab the memory stick out of here.
Let me... Okay. Let me hang on. Just, Michael, just for the record, let me read this in. Michael Fryland is requesting site plan review of the change of use of a developed property located at five thirty-five Shore Road. The building includes retail on the first floor and a multifamily unit on the second floor of the building predate site plan review. The applicant would like to operate an office on the first floor, which is a change of use triggering site plan review because no site plan has been approved for the site. In order to maximize his options, Mr. Fryland is asking for approval of a category-three village retail shop. See zoning ordinance VA District, Section ten-six-five-F. If he obtains this approval, he can operate a category-three or two use without further review, as long as there are no exterior changes. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section nineteen-nine Site Plan Review. Procedure will be as follows: The board will begin by having the applicant introduce the project. The board should then make a finding of completeness. If it's deemed incomplete, the board will identify the information needed to make it complete, and there will be no substantive discussion in the application. If it is deemed complete, then the substantive review may begin. The board will also decide if a site walk or public hearing will be scheduled with the close of the discussion. If it is deemed complete, the board has the option to prove, approve conditions, design, or fix. Mr. Fryland, thank you for your patience. It's probably a little later than you expected to be here today.
Yeah.
He was warned.
Yeah. So, I don't have any slides or anything. I'm new to this. So I purchased five thirty-five Shore Road about a month ago, and the property is divided in two: half in Cape Elizabeth, half in South Portland, with the front triangle in South Portland and the rear triangle in Cape Elizabeth. I'm not planning on making any changes to the site. It operated as a retail business, so as far back as it seems anyone can remember. South Portland always had it as a retail, and it was always retail for Cape. There was a pharmacy, home health care, yarn shop, and most recently, Ann Veronica Clothing Jewelry Store. And as I said, I'm not planning on making any changes to the site. I'm putting my office in there, and when I say office, it's gonna be very simple. I kind of purchased the building just for a garage bay, and I wound up with a residence and a office space down low. So I don't have big plans for it, just low-impact. And I try to abide by all the limitations set by the code, which was not easy because the building's from around nineteen-hundred and the code is fairly recent. So the tricky part was figuring out the parking, because as I said, it's a contained site that's been the same way forever with no complaints. So I did what I could, and it's all in here, and I could elaborate or answer questions on any of it. Or should I go through each item and...
No. Please.
Everybody's had a chance to read it. Would board members like to ask questions rather than have them go through page by page? I think that might be a good use of our time.
I have a question.
Yes, Joe.
I mean, this does seem, like, completely adequate to begin reviewing, but there's a question about the square footage. And I think, Maureen, you said that the square footage is actually the footprint, the gross footprint, not... I think you took the interior square footage.
Right. So what is the gross footprint?
So I got seventeen-twenty-eight for the main building and five-sixty-four for the garage.
Yeah, I think the problem, Mr. Fryland, is you've used, apparently have used, interior measurements?
Oh, no, I understand, but...
You called for exterior wall.
Right.
I...
We don't have decent numbers for your square footage, which impacts the parking calculation.
Right. So maybe, so if we go off the seventeen-hundred, is it one space for every three hundred thirty-three? Square foot?
Mr. Fryland, I don't think you want to back into this, based on how much parking you can handle. You just need to know what the square footage of the outside walls of the building equals.
All right.
With respect.
But I think that I'd be willing to accept the square footage based on what's measuring this survey.
Would you want that number added to the survey?
Yeah. But I don't think that stands in the way of completeness.
Are we basing it on this sketch, which says fifteen-seventeen, the bottom of the square there? And you've got a sketch on...
Right.
Then, which you show the bottom...
That sketch is from the...
...through, which I guess is the demarcation line between the two, between the town.
Is that sketch my sketch, or is that from the city?
Sorry?
Is that from the city records, or is that my sketch?
I don't know. I'm asking you. Sorry, it's the city record?
It's the town of Cape Elizabeth assessing card.
So the square footage would be fifteen-seventeen divided by two, and plus the, plus this... Okay, that one's a difficult one.
Didn't we get the survey?
Yeah, there's a survey.
Yeah.
We just need to add square footage to the survey.
But on your drawing, right, is the top or the bottom of the drawing Cape Elizabeth?
The bottom of the drawing, the street side. Oh, no, I'm sorry, the street side, the street side is...
So you have a square, which is twenty-four by twenty-four, right? It's twenty-four by twenty-four.
This is from the city records here.
Yes, okay, so this is Cape Elizabeth, this section here, right?
Yes, exactly.
So you have twenty-four by twenty-four.
Which is, that's the garage and the bath.
Okay, plus the seven by twenty-four.
The...
And then this square, this square here divided by two, plus or minus whatever that little bit is.
We haven't been dividing it, the building in half. We've been reviewing the whole site.
Okay. But now you said which amount was in Cape Elizabeth rather than...
We hadn't... I mean, I guess the board can go that route.
Well...
We're looking at a building for usage. We should look at the entire square footage of the building.
Yeah.
And I think South Portland is kind of, kind of roll whatever way we roll, if I remember what you said.
So can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, Joe's point, if you would take it again, Joe.
Given how late it is, can we just, like, go through this, the checklist, and yea or nay each item?
Which one are you looking at?
The submission requirements. Page two.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Which is page three of your memo?
Yeah.
If you have a memo.
Right.
Page three is the site plan review submission checklist.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so right title and interests, we have key map, et cetera. I'm sorry, Joe, what is... Would you help me out with your point?
Well, my, no, my point is that we're just reviewing for completion, right?
For complete, that's right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I'm just suggesting we go through this and make, as long as we all agree that everything's here, it's complete.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So if the square footage is seventeen-twenty-eight, and I have to say that part of that seventeen-twenty-eight is a boiler room and a staircase to the second floor, which isn't at all part of the office space.
It's the gross.
Right, I understand that. I'm just adding that little move.
Actually, it's the gross, including the garage, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I need to add the square footage of the garage as part of the office space?
Yeah, the ordinance reads a gross square footage of the building.
So the second floor as well?
So it's twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety-two square feet.
Well...
You don't have to count the second floor because that's a residential unit.
Right, he just said for the whole building, so I was just clarifying.
Yeah, but he's still trying to get to the whole footprint of the whole first floor measured from the exterior.
Right, I thought you said the garage space wasn't included in that.
It is included.
It is?
Definition...
But you told me it wasn't.
The definition on page two of the memo for floor area of a structure, which is in the zoning ordinance, says the sum of the contiguous horizontal areas of the floors of a structure enclosed by exterior walls, including unfinished areas within the exterior walls, and attached garages, and excluding basement space, porches, and decks. And then the last sentence says, "Floor area shall be calculated by measurement of the outside dimensions of the exterior walls." So you, if we needed the square footage of the entire building, you would have to count the second floor.
Right.
But you are calculating the square footage of your office space.
Right, and now you're saying the office space includes the garage as well?
I'm saying that everything inside the exterior walls has to be calculated, and we don't have to count the second floor because it's a residential unit.
Right, I understand that, but when I met with you prior to this, you told me the garage space would not need to be included as part of the office space.
I'm telling you, this is the definition in the ordinance, and it says including garages.
So then if we go by that, so...
You defined.
What was that?
You take this sketch, you've already defined, because that's what Maureen asked for, the active dimensions of the building, and you've already defined it. It's just that you've got to calculate five-seventy-six, one-sixty-eight, fifteen-seventeen, and two-ninety-six, and that's it. I don't have a quick mind to add that up.
Henry, what are you reading from?
What?
The assessing card.
Reading from the assessing card.
The listing map is not what we're...
Survey.
We're not using that.
We don't have to use the survey.
So it's, this guy right here. So, Maureen, if correctly from on, we need an accurate square footage to calculate the parking requirements from which Mike is requesting some relief.
And I also believe you need an accurate square footage in order to grant an approval, because typically when you grant approvals for types of uses, other than residential, you quote a specific square footage.
So are you saying you want the surveyor to represent what it is?
I think we need a measurement that goes from the exterior walls.
Okay.
And one way to, I mean, this is the problem. One way to do it would be to use a survey that the applicant has submitted. Another way to do it would be to use the assessing card, but I don't think calculating the interior walls, which was done on one page of the applicant's application, meets the definition.
No.
Well, this is what we're working with now, doesn't meet the definition.
Which one are you looking at there?
Given the hour, would it make sense to find this is not complete and come back the next meeting with the measurements and the detail of your request on parking, using the correct measurements?
Sure.
Would that be a problem?
It won't be a problem. I just want to make sure that I won't be doing work for no reason, because then I'm going to be at twelve parking spaces required, and then I have a lot of provisions that would have to be taken into account in order to accommodate those spaces. So if I come back with the proper measurements and I say, "All right, I need twelve spaces, but I'd like the board to discount it by thirty percent, then allow for stacked parking, and then allow for two spaces on the street in South Portland," like, if the board's going to say, "No, no, no," it's sort of...
Yeah, no, you're right, but to get there, we've got to start from the, you know, square one has to be accurate dimensions, because you're asking for stacking, you're asking for the reduction, and it's a little bit weird, but I think it makes sense.
No, no, I...
You're asking for the South Portland on-street parking requirements, among other reasons, because the property fronts in South Portland.
Right. Yeah, I could probably say right now that I'd need twelve spaces based on the seventh, based on about the twenty-three-hundred. So it'd be around seventeen plus five-hundred, so about twelve spaces would be required about...
Well, whatever you can't make up for on-site is going to have to be on-street.
Right, well, I guess what I was saying is that, based on my proposed considerations, there's a couple of things that the board could consider to reduce those number of parking spaces, because I've searched off-site, and there is no off-site parking. I've checked everywhere.
Substantive discussion.
Yeah, that would, that is substantive. Tell you what, let me suggest to the board that we find that it's not complete, ask Mr. Fryland to come back for the next meeting with the data, and work in the meantime... with the data, and work in the meantime with Maureen to formulate a scheme, if you will, or a request to handle the parking requirement, whatever it might be.
All right. Yeah, I've been working on that. I'll come back with the new dimensions and the new number of parking spaces needed.
May I ask one question? And I, this is for Maureen. I missed the workshop, and maybe this was discussed at that time. But how did this place function beforehand?
It is a building, yeah, it's a building that predates any development review. So, it has no site plan review. It was built before we regulated this type of thing.
Okay.
So.
Because he's a new owner, he's now.
It's not the, he's, he's changing the use.
New use.
And under the ordinance, if you want to change the use, you trigger site plan review, which drags him into all of this.
He's changing the use from a commercial?
From, from retail to office.
And I have one other question. If, if it comes to light that I need twelve parking spaces and I can only provide four, can I just not use the building? Is there, like, I, I don't know what happens. Is there just an impasse where that this building can't be functional?
Maureen, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, you're saying that we have to do this because the applicant wants to change the use?
Yes.
But the approval that the applicant is requesting is not for the change of use. He's requesting an approval for the historic use.
He isn't. He's, he's actually going from a grand, and I know it seems strange, he's, he's going from a grandfathered retail use to a site plan-approved Category Three Village Retail, which allows him both to operate Village Retail-type uses and Category Two-type uses.
Which requires more parking, retail or?
It, it goes back and forth. I mean, one parking is based on square, there's two different square footage requirements, and then they also talk about employees. So.
I guess I'm a little troubled to kind of permanently give our stamp of approval to a property that has four parking places.
Yep.
Where our standards would require twelve.
Yes.
So, I'm wondering if there isn't some other way to accomplish.
Not that the code enforcement officer and I have been able to figure out.
Well, can I ask a gentleman a question? Are you going to be retail there, or?
No.
Is it just a retailer, well, I was gonna say, is it just gonna be a retail space that just never, never has customers?
The, the concern is that the applicant is working with both Town of Cape Elizabeth and City of South Portland regulations, and the irony is that in Cape Elizabeth, he is closer to a conforming use than he is in South Portland. In South Portland, the property is in a residential zone, and right now, the grandfathered non-conforming use is retail, and he is seeking approval to go to office.
I understand.
If things don't work out, he has two years under the City of South Portland rules to go back to retail, and he's trying to leave his options open.
The only reason I, I wondered was, you know, if you had a retail store that doesn't have any customers, I didn't see a change.
Right. But the part, I think the parking requirements for office are fairly similar to retail regardless. I think I, instead of needing twelve spaces, maybe I need eleven.
Yeah, he's, he's still has.
It's, it's still.
Bothly.
I understand, but it doesn't have to change anything. If he didn't change use by just leaving it as it was, you wouldn't have changed anything.
Because the last, the last use of the store was Ann Veronica, which was retail.
It was the current, the current use that's recognized under the Town of Cape Elizabeth is retail.
I understand.
If he wants to change it to anything else than retail.
I understand.
Trigger site plan.
I, I understand that. That's why.
I have a suggestion. Of, we've already, we've pretty much determined it's going to be deemed incomplete. Would it be appropriate for him to come back for another workshop to discuss some of this stuff at a workshop?
Yes, absolutely.
Rather than here.
Yeah, that would be, I think that would be useful. My own theory is, South Portland lets you use on-street parking, and the prop, okay, let's talk about that at the workshop.
If, if we determine this is incomplete, let's move on.
Could I have a motion?
Let's have a conversation.
Could I have a motion to determine it incomplete and table two?
Nope, just to deem it incomplete.
Okay.
Okay. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Michael Freeland for site plan review of the change of use of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet to Village. Retail of a developed property located at five thirty-five Shore Road be deemed incomplete.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Maureen, don't we need a, we don't?
No. Once you deem it incomplete, you're done.
Okay, then he has to come back and.
Then, then he can call me tomorrow. We can talk about that.
We haven't started the clock yet. May I make a motion? We adjourned.
Ah. Let's go home.